Up there he is, rounding the corner.
I guess.
A little tight parking?
Huh?
A little tight parking?
A little bit.
Yeah, I got a better one tonight.
I just.
I saw that open spot. Oh, that's a clean spot. I can't carry that.
No, I just used Starbucks. Starbucks, they call it six thirty, I think. My go-to.
I usually wind up over near Mantra. The Mantra is just beyond our, although there's two unused charging stations.
Very expensive charging stations. People come back from Florida, they'll use them.
He said, I have two webinars. It's always a little bit of.
Oh, don't feel bad. I, my groomer was like getting my dog. And I've got my neighbor's, his little brother, they're away. I've got his dog. And the dog was passing away during the grooming. So the, yeah. So the groomer's like, I don't know you, but I'd bring him to vet. I'm like, all right, well, let's see how he does in the next two hours. Because this morning I did see a little bit. So my niece is responsible right now. Let's see how she does.
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
All right, shall I kick things off? Now you're on the home stretch over here.
I'm good.
You're good? Pete, you're good?
Yep.
All right. Good, all right. Mike is all set over there? All right, fabulous. All right, good evening. Welcome to Medfield Select Board meeting for Tuesday, April 16th. Do you want to remind everybody this meeting is being recorded? On this meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Select Board will attend in person. Members of the public may attend in person. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by one of the two following options. You can go to the Medfield Town webpage, select tonight's meeting. There is an online link that will bring you right into the meeting. As well as if you don't have access to a computer, you can dial in. And then, as always, and I think this is so important, and it's not something I think a lot of people are aware of, but the info packet is, oh, I'll remember that. The info packet is available. So anything that we're reviewing tonight is available to everyone in the public. So if you're home, you're watching, certainly click on it and go step for step. I know Mike has got a handheld mic here. We are getting more and more comments about not being able to hear at home. So I can't stress enough, if you have a question, if you want to make a comment, just please reach for the mic. I know it's been, it's been near Bill for many, many years, but we're going to try to bring it up front so that we don't have a bad habit, which I know happens, where people just start to talk. I've been guilty of it, but we want to make sure everyone at home can hear. So with that, why don't we call to order? And I certainly want to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Okay, thank you. All right, start off with appointments. First one is Deputy Police Chief Barry McGrath to request the following. Request the Select Board approve a grant, a bulletproof vest. Come on up, Barry. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I, I wrote a grant, which I'm presenting to you for your approval for percentage of the cost of the bulletproof vests that we've purchased.
Any questions?
No.
My only question was administrative. You're down as the authorized signatory?
Yes.
Did, that was intentional?
I have no idea.
The chief has set it up for, for Eileen to be the signatory on this one.
Okay.
So I'm not, usually it's me, but in this case, they, they put you down, so it's fine.
You're okay with that?
I'm fine with that. I delegate my authority.
No, Christine is already bulletproof, so I understand.
So in other words, you're saying this is best for me?
Not yet, you haven't had enough time.
Hey, this is true. No, so we, so we will, we're good with that?
Absolutely, sure. Yeah, I guess I need to make the motion, that's right. We all have new roles here. Let's see, I move that we approve the grant for bulletproof vests. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now, second here, we've got a request to appoint Special Officer Robert Hayne to the position of full-time officer effective April 21st, 2024.
Yes, that is correct.
Yep. And had you, has he been before the board before? I'm trying to think if I recognize a name.
He is.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, he, you appointed him as a special police officer. He is currently a Northeastern University police officer, and we're hoping to get him over here on the 21st, full-time.
Excellent. Pete, any questions?
Where is he now, Barry?
Northeastern University Police Department.
Yep, great.
No questions.
So my request all the time, I was saying this to the chief the other day, you've got so many new faces, I'm hoping so badly that we can get some shots taken of the, of the individuals and start putting names and faces, because there's so many young guys that, I see them downtown, and if I feel guilty looking at the, at the patch, like, okay, which one is this?
No, I think that's, that's a great idea, actually. I, I try to get information out on our Facebook Police page as much as I can, but I definitely think we could do a group photo with the new officers and the town officials.
Yeah, that'd be great, because you know what? I see them around town, and they're so personable, and they're super engaging, so it'd be awesome.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Ready? Okay. I move that we appoint Special Officer Robert Hayne to the position of full-time officer effective April 21st, 2024.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and number, letter C, request to appoint student officers Ingrid Senna, Timothy Riley, Peter Braswell, to full-time officers conditioned upon successful completion of the MPTC Academy effective May 3rd, 2024.
That is correct, yes.
What does MPTC stand for again?
Massachusetts Police Training Committee.
Excellent. All right. Pete?
No questions.
The only question was, where, with, with these three added, where are we at in terms of full staffing? There's so many.
I think we're, we're just about at full staffing now, minus one.
Down to one, okay. It seems like there are a lot of names, I was like, boy.
Well, we're working hard to get, get the numbers up there. We've got a great group of people on board, so.
So when you say full, so what's that bring the number to now, twenty-something?
No, I believe seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. All right, excellent. Goal is to be twenty-something?
I'll leave that up to the chief and the town.
Seventeen is a great number.
I'm not knocking that. I, listen, I'm hearing that there's more and more officers that are looking to come to Medfield, so I think that's fantastic.
That's seventeen plus the, you and the chief. I have nineteen in my head.
Nineteen sworn officers.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah. Let's, let's leave it at this, since she's on vacation.
I, I feel.
We have seventeen budgeted.
You know anxiety right now?
I know you do.
I'm with you guys.
We have seventeen officers budgeted for fiscal year 2025. Now you're off the hook.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
If you want to go get over any anxiety from the question, just hang around for Mo's contract.
I was just happy I could answer the MPTC question, so it's all good.
Ready? Okay, I moved that we appoint student officers Ingrid Senna, Timothy Riley, Peter Braswell to full-time officers conditioned upon successful completion of the MPTC Academy effective May 3rd, 2024.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and request to appoint Student Officer David Hayes to attend the next MPTC Academy in May 2024, conditional on his meeting the requirements set forth by the MPTC pre-entrance standards.
Correct.
Excellent. Pete?
So what are the pre-entrance standards?
So he actually passed them, we got confirmation of that today. It's, it's all the physical, the running and jumping and stretching and all that.
That's awesome.
I have another administrative question. Are we appointing or nominating? Just, do we get to appoint people to this, or? I'm just curious, was it nomination or appointment?
No, your appointment.
It is an appointment, okay. That's great, didn't know we had that power. Okay, I moved that we appoint Student Officer David Hayes to attend the next MPTC Academy in May 2024, conditional on his meeting the requirements set forth by the MPTC pre-entrance standards.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. By the way, Barry, it was really nice to see your officers out here at the intersection checking for distracted driving.
I appreciate that. We're trying to keep them busy.
Well, it's important to let people know, too, that, I, I think that has a multiplier effect, that, I mean, people shouldn't be on their phones when they're driving.
Oh, absolutely, no, distracted driving.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, excellent, okay. Next up is Trinity Financial to provide an update to the Select Board and to request the Select Board to sign a letter of support for the Medfield State Hospital project for the next round of state historic tax credits. All right.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Amanda.
Hi, everyone.
Thanks for coming. Thank you for having me. Okay, so I think you have your package in front of you, and then the folks at home should be able to see it on Zoom. So I have a quick five, five, I think, slide update. This is our second quarter update to the Select Board. We had said back in February that we wanted to come quarterly, just so that everyone in town had a standard place to get updates on the project and to see what kind of progress we were making. So, without further ado, um, so my kind of order of discussion is just to reiterate the critical path items to closing, so that we're all, you know, on the same page about what we're working toward. And then I'll give our quarter two update, or I guess it's really our quarter one update of what has been going on so far. Talk a little bit about MBTA zoning compliance, which I know the Select Board and probably everyone in this room are keenly aware of. And then reiterate, this is a section I had in my last one, but kind of continued partnership. What kinds of touchpoints do we expect to have with the town and vice versa over the next quarter? So, next slide, please. Our critical path items to closing, and these have not changed since Trinity was selected in 2022, that is our state and federal historic part two approval. Unfortunately, I don't have any updates from MHC and NPS. We said last time, we submitted a whole bout of clarifications. We brought them dramatically in paper fashion, but no, dramatically is a joke. But they're here at Town Hall, if folks want to see what has been put into the National Parks Service and MHC, but because of the volume of materials we surmise, we've not heard anything back yet. So we'll keep that on the docket, and then I'll talk a little bit more today about the next submission that we want to make to Mass Historic, which is kind of purely a financial submission, it's not any change in design. And then, so, coming with that financial submission that we're hoping to submit in just a week or so, we will be looking for an allocation of state historic tax credits from Mass Historic. So we've not yet received an allocation because we're still in conversations about these points of clarification, and that is a critical path item to getting the type of funding that we'll need for this project to be successful. And finally, the extraordinary costs for public infrastructure and hazardous materials remediation, I feel like I've said that phrase a million and one times by now, but we'll talk, you know, much more about that. We actually have April Anderson here tonight. April is Trinity and the Town's consultant for the one-stop application and government financing generally. And this is, this quarterly update will be before we submit our next one-stop application. So the next time I come to you, we'll have had behind-the-scenes conversations with the town. Christine will send materials to the Select Board for approval, but I think this is probably the only public meeting where we'll be able to ask April any questions about the upcoming one-stop round and these sources of funding that we're seeking. I think before I even get into MBTA, it's important to note that the one-stop, where we're seeking these funds for hazardous materials and public infrastructure, those sources are no longer available should Medfield become non-compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. So that's kind of how this project ties into the MBTA Communities Act. Next slide, please. So for our update of what we've been working on in quarter one and hope to continue in quarter two, so we submitted our 2024 One-Stop Expression of Interest. This comes from the town, so the town is actually the applicant here, and Trinity and April, the town all worked together to get that in. It tells the state that we're seeking to submit an application in the full round, and that time period is, I think, early May to early June, kind of May 5th to June 6th, or something like that loosely. So we've submitted the first step, which is great. Last year, the town in 2023 was funded for a small subset of design and off-site work, and part of that was funds to engage with Eversource and have Eversource design their electric grid that they will need to implement, and this grant pays for that design and implementation in order to serve the project. So the project, as we all know, does not currently have any infrastructure, so with that first 2023 swath of funding, we were able to engage with Eversource. Now, nothing's been paid yet, it just kind of gave Eversource the ability to take the project seriously and engage with us, and so we're in discussions with their design team, and we're able to actually be reacting to their electric infrastructure design. So I anticipate in the next meeting, we should have tangible updates about, hey, what is that electric grid actually going to look like? Additionally, on this same 2023 grant, we've been coordinating with the town and VHB, which is the engineering firm that Trinity submitted the RFP with, but they're also part of a public bid list that the town can use at the state level. So we've been coordinating a contract with VHB to finish 100% of the infrastructure design on the campus. This was funded by that last year award of the housing, the Housing Works Award, but it will mean that the entire campus has its infrastructure fully designed, and most importantly, that will allow us to go forward with some permitting, which I'll talk about in my next steps. On the historic side of things, like I said, we're, oh, sorry, we're preparing the submission of the 2024 One-Stop Application, which is our next round of funding, in these two public infrastructure and hazardous materials remediation buckets. And we're working with the town and also with the state to outline the path to housing production. We all know that it's important that, to the Select Board and to the town, that, you know, there'd be a definitive kind of end to the town's oversight and a start to Trinity's ownership, and so we're really trying to tell that story to the state of, we need to know that we have all the financing for these two extraordinary costs before Trinity can get the private financing in order to close on the property, and the town's working with us every step of the way. So we're meeting, Christine and my team are meeting with Secretary Augustus on April 24th. So I anticipate at the next meeting, we'll have met with Secretary Augustus, hopefully gotten some input from their team about what they think is a feasible plan or a strategy moving forward. We have some ideas, we don't feel comfortable talking about them publicly until we're able to talk with his office, but then, when I come to you in quarter three, we'll have gone through all of that, discussed internally, and submitted the next one-stop round. So we should be able to speak clearly about the direction that the state gave us at that point. Finally, we're compiling our April submission to Mass Historic for state historic tax credit financing. This is what we're asking for the letter of support for tonight. This is not new, the Select Board has issued at least three letters of support for us in the past. I'm happy to report that we've already received letters for this round from the Planning Board, the Medfield State Hospital Development Committee, the two historic boards, and Belle Forge Art Center. So those are our kind of six groups that we always ask to submit with us and show solidarity, and I'm happy to talk more about that April submission. It really, there are no substantive design changes, though. We keep resubmitting so that they know that we're still continuing and serious, but until we get their reaction to our package that we submitted in February with the, the advanced design, we don't, you know, we haven't heard about any movement on their end. In terms of next steps, so kind of, I thought of this in like the next, next quarter primarily, maybe a little bit longer. So, like I said, with authorization of VHB, the project will have 100% infrastructure design. The other swath of funding that was included in, pardon me, that 100% infrastructure design is for the campus, and it's also for the off-site intersections. So the Select Board at the next meeting, we will in all likelihood be asking to go over the intersections, if that's something the Select Board wants to take up at that time. So once VHB is engaged, not only can they design the campus, they can start to design some of the off-site work that Medfield might start construction on sooner than when the campus closes.
DD is detailed design?
DD is design development. So for the infrastructure, we're talking 100% design, but my little green call out there is just speaking to, because we're advancing the infrastructure, there are things that we want to do in tandem with that. Two of those things are going back to the Planning Board for subdivision plan approval and final site plan approval. That's, you know, pending their schedule and when they want to take up those matters, but in order to do that, Trinity has decided we need to advance all of the design to design development. So there's kind of three levels of drawings. Right now, everything's a little bit higher than schematic design, and then it gets into design development, and then it gets into construction documents. So by the time we go back to the Planning Board for that subdivision plan and final site plan approval, we'll have, we'll have all of the documents at design development, so that's your architecture, your mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, your structural, and then throughout the summer, the, the VHB team will be designing all of the infrastructure to 100%. So that's, you know, your construction documents or past that. So that's, you know, your construction documents or past that. Um, in addition to that, so in 2023, the town also received grant funds for a campus-wide hazardous materials investigation. That will tell the town and Trinity the whole scope of the remediation needed. So they'll be going into every building, uh, looking at exactly what materials are in there, the volume of materials, and then estimating those costs. A lot of these materials, you need to take them multiple states away in order to dispose of them properly. They can't just go to, you know, any, um, landfill. So, um, we see this as huge progress to really get our arms around the full scope of the cost here. Um, in addition, the award amount that was given, there was a little bit more than just doing the investigation. So we looked at the campus and we said, you know, building six has some structural degradation that could use, um, could use some funding to be shored up. So that will just mean kind of patching up holes, making things a little bit more secure, uh, while the buildings are, are sitting.
Amanda, where's, uh, building six on the campus?
Building six is when you're driving in, going to the Charles River overlook. Building seven is the very large one.
With the Department of Corporations Training Center?
Is that building six?
That's the one.
No, building seven. So building six is across the way. So it's on the interior side of the campus. If you pull in by the buses, uh, so you're like on the Charles River side of the campus, it's on the outer road, but the inner side. That's not a great explanation. A lot of buildings. We have maps.
It sounds like it's across, what was the court, the Department of Corporations Training Building? Is that right?
Corrections. Department of Corrections.
Pardon?
Department of Corrections.
Department of Corrections Training Facility.
Is that building seven, the, the training facility? I'm not sure of that.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
So that building has some problems?
They all do. In reality, what happened is we first submitted asking for the full freight of the remediation, which as we know, our initial estimates is twenty million dollars. The program that funds it, underutilized properties program through Mass Development, they have a per-project cap of a million dollars. And so we looked at the campus and we said, well, what could we do for a million dollars? So the bigger buildings like building seven or, um, you know, building thirteen up in the North Field, those are a lot more than a million dollars. Building six is one of the more standard buildings, so they're, they're the ones that are symmetrical on the campus. Um, and so we looked at the scope of work for that and we said, hey, we could do all of building six for around a million dollars. So it was a little bit random. We wanted to get into the funding round. We wanted to have conversations with Mass Development and, and have them fully understand the needs on this campus. So when we got, so we asked for a million, we got five hundred thousand. Um, and when we got that, we said, well, we can't really remediate half a building. You know, you can, but there's a better way to spend the money. So in working with the town, working with the state, we all decided, why don't we do this whole campus exploration, really understand the full freight here? But then there was a hundred thousand dollars left over. So we stuck with the building that we initially applied with and we said, okay, well, at least we'll make this building more secure. The types of things that shoring will do is like the buildings in the eaves of the roofs. A lot of the metal sheeting on that protected the eaves have fallen away. And so you have these moisture pockets where water comes in, you have mold, you have structural degradation on the wooden beams. So it's kind of, it's, um, even more secure than the build. The buildings are quite secure today with, you know, the plywood and none of you can't get in or out. But it's, um, like a moisture security.
Yeah, I understand some of the buildings don't really have floors in them anymore, like the building at the back left by the overlook, I think, is one that doesn't have a good flooring system at this point. But building thirteen, is that the, is that the old R building, the one that's in the field, the North Field?
Yes.
So that's one that should be in very good shape because that was redone when, uh, Ducaucus was governor. The state spent like twenty million on that one on the building in front of it to, to rehab them. So those two are the ones that are in the best condition of all.
Well, and that's what will be so helpful when we have this full campus inspection, is we'll really be able to pinpoint, okay, building thirteen is doing a lot better than building six is, for instance.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so I kind of covered my next bullet point, but in the permitting camp, we've got town permitting to complete and state permitting to complete. Uh, you know, roughly, we're about three quarters of a way through each. So for the town permitting, we want to go back as soon as possible to get subdivision plan approval from the Planning Board. That is contingent on VHB's design work of the infrastructure and also doing a full survey. That will also help Bell Forge to define their property lines, um, which currently have not been defined by like the, the book and page number definition. Um, in addition, we had a few things outstanding in front of the Planning Board that our design just wasn't at the point that they needed. Um, so we said, well, the Planning Board said, we'll give you interim site plan approval and then just come back to us when you're at the right point in design. So those three things, we're doing a tree survey of all the trees on campus, which we completed. Uh, doing the full stormwater infrastructure design, which is happening as a part of the hundred percent infrastructure design, and doing a photometrics plan, which is all of the lighting elements on the campus and making sure that they're dark sky compliant, that none of the light falls onto anyone else's property. Um, so it, again, it was just that our design wasn't at the point of picking out fixtures as delicate as lighting. Um, but we're excited because we're advancing all of our design to design development or better, uh, we'll be able to go back and, and close that out. On the state side, so last year, we submitted our MEPA notice of project change, uh, with the help of many stakeholders in this room. Uh, then MEPA recommended that we go back for a single environmental impact report. Now, this was all of our, by our, I mean the town, DCAM and Trinity's preferred method. So we were happy that the state went this direction. Uh, but again, in order to do that, we needed to have infrastructure design advanced, uh, mostly stormwater again. So because we're, uh, because we, the town and Trinity received the grant funds, we're advancing infrastructure design, we're confident that we'll be able to close out permitting this year. Um, our most immediate next step is submitting the one-stop application for the full public infrastructure and remediation financing. Like I said, we're meeting with Secretary Augustus on the 24th. And, uh, you know, we have some, we have some suggestions for what our strategy might be, but we really need to get his reaction and to get the reaction of the, uh, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. But I asked April to come tonight because April does this all day, every day for her job. She also used to, uh, be instrumental in the Executive Office of, um, Economic Development, which used to house this program. And so I wanted to make sure that April was here to answer any questions on the record that folks might have about this one-stop program, the grants that are administered by this program, um, how Trinity seeks to use the program, and also the tie-in of the MBTA Communities Compliance and what that would mean for these funding sources. Um, uh, like I said before, we're submitting our third application for state historic tax credits to Mass Historic. We're going to be doing that, uh, by next Monday. So we're very excited. We've, you know, got everything lined up. Um, and then we are also anticipating the final comments and questions from the National Park Service and from Mass Historic, uh, leading to the part two approval eventually. So I keep, every time I ask for a letter of support from the historic boards, I'm like, I hope to have an update for you soon. Um, but we will be patient, continue to be patient. Anything on that? That was a lot.
It's all good.
Alright.
Pete, any questions?
Uh, yes. Um, so I think that people at home that, that haven't been following this might be curious to know about the, uh, the, the process for the historic tax credits and how much you're looking to get eventually. The fact that you do them sequentially. I mean, you're mentioning here the third application to the state. Um, but I think the people would be appreciative knowing a little bit more detail about that and what you're looking for ultimately uh, as a goal on historic tax credits with the federal and the, and the state. And, and maybe why Jean is ahead of you on that because she's already got her historic tax credits, I understand. Um, and, and I'm also curious a- about the permitting, when, when you expect to get back to the Planning Board and when you might get to the ZBA for their, because that's a trigger for us for our 40B, um, process. So that's something that I'm very curious to know when you're going to get to the ZBA.
Yes, so let's do permitting first. We don't go to the ZBA, is that correct, Christine?
Right, you're going through the Planning Board, but the, the bottom line issue for the affordable units aren't actually counted until they are, the building permits are pulled. So the issue is the building permit trigger.
Yes, so in order for, um, us to get to the point where we can get a building permit, we need the state to commit to a strategy of getting the full freight of the public financing need in the project. So it's kind of a squishy answer, one that I hope to have a lot better answers to at our next meeting, uh, once we can get in front of the state and have these conversations. For the Planning Board, um, so we're working in tandem with the town and VHB right now to, um, sign their contract up. Once that happens, their first, and that I anticipate that will happen this week, if not next week. Um, once that happens, their first scope of work is to do the survey and the subdivision plan. Then then we'll ask to go back before the Planning Board for subdivision plan approval. Um, so that can happen, you know, as soon as the town and VHB sign their contract up and the Planning Board chooses to have us on their agenda for that. In terms of the final site plan approval, the stormwater management plan will take a little bit longer just because VHB is working on the survey and subdivision plan first and then they'll move on. Um, so I anticipate that will be later. Um, and similarly, the MEPA single EIR for the state requires stormwater management. Um, so those two things, the final site plan approval and the, uh, MEPA single EIR are contingent on that stormwater management plan. That will be VHB's second scope of work. And then, is that all you had on permitting?
I'm sorry, second?
Did I answer your questions on permitting before I go to historic?
I think so. I'm, I, I am curious about the timing, how soon you expect things like the Planning Board and the, and, and how soon do you expect that you might have construction drawings, for instance, because then that, that's when you can pull a building permit?
Sure, so the Planning Board, you know, I think they have been nothing but, um, just completely amenable to the project and, and given us the time. So I expect that once, uh, the town and VHB sign up this contract in the next, you know, I don't, I don't want to speak for the town on that, but, um, VHB I know just made another turn of the contract. So, uh, and the town has made comments on it. So that is a very, you know, actively ongoing process in order to get them fully engaged and start working. Um, their contract, I believe, has some, I, you know, some timelines about how long a subdivision plan will take, how long a stormwater management plan will take. And, um, I would expect at our next meeting in Q3 that we would have the subdivision plan approval well underway. Uh, you know, really contingent on a lot of things that are outside of Trinity's control, but we want to be moving on that as soon as possible this summer.
Yeah, so you're probably not even working on construction drawings at this point, or are you?
So the thing with construction drawings, so, um, like I said, a hundred percent of the infrastructure design is funded through the town's 2023 receipt of the grant. Um, and then Trinity, because of that vote of confidence from the state and because of what we need to advance our permitting, we are comfortable advancing all architectural and structural and MEP design up to design development. However, until we have a final strategy and consensus with the state, we're not comfortable with advancing to construction documents. So I really hope that the next time I come before you guys in Q3, you know, we've gotten that, that strategy from the state and we're all in agreement and I can give you more firm numbers. Until then, you know, everyone is working in tandem, the town, Trinity, our consultants and the state, to be fair. Um, they're very invested in this project. We hear from the Governor's Office, Lieutenant Governor's Office, Secretary Augustus, how much this is important to them. Everyone wants to see this happen from all accounts. It's just finding the right pathway to it. Um, so I, I hope to have better updates for you in Q3.
And, and did I hear you say that you're meeting with, uh, Ed Augustus on the 24th?
That's correct, yes.
So you'll have better answers after that, hopefully.
It was supposed to be the 10th and it got rescheduled, so hopefully, um, and I'm sure, you know, the, um, the Select Board will be reviewing the one-stop materials, uh, probably not in a public meeting. So though, that should give you guys a better sense of kind of what the state may have given us an indication that would be acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully they've got good answers for you at that point. Um, do you have some sort of estimate as to the amount of the tax credits that you guys are looking for?
So the historic tax credits, it's really twofold. There's federal and there's state. So the federal historic tax credits, once you get that part two approval, um, and part two really looks at your drawings. So that was, we advanced our design a little bit past schematic design into design development. We're already about twenty-five percent into design development. Um, we did that so the state could look and say, what historic elements are they keeping? What are they proposing for flooring, for window types, for the treatment of the exterior porches on the buildings? Um, and, and those, you know, really impactful historic elements like the, the detail that we don't see on, on new buildings today as much. So when the National Park Service finishes their review, finishes their review of our whole clarification package, maybe we go back and forth with them on another round of questions or clarifications. But once that is all finished, the, the end of that process would be, uh, NPS part two approval. And then with that, you have eligibility for, you know, around up to twenty percent of your, your total costs.
Oh, great.
That's determined by what are qualified rehabilitation expenses. And primarily, those are things that are, um, depreciable. So like land doesn't count, but like all of your roof shingles count, things like that. So it's very, you know, the accountants primarily take care of that, um, but that-
And that's federal, twenty percent federal?
That's right, so it-
The state ones go up to what percent?
So the state is completely different. So the reason that Bell Forge has received some allocations so far is because of these three-time-a-year rounds. So they're in January, which we submitted, uh, April and then August. So the state does this piecemeal and you're not guaranteed a certain amount, so and the underwriting-
Competing against the other people against the budgeted amount.
That's right, that's right. And so, you know, Trinity has had great success working with Mass Historic. We've done, you know, six historic mill projects and other historic campus. Um, but in order for us to feel comfortable in the underwriting, we look at, you know, okay, if a past project had X amount of square feet or X amount of buildings and the state funded, you know, five million over, over a five-year period, we, we take that into account. So what we're currently underwriting, I don't really want to speak to that just because I wouldn't want the state to feel in pressure in any way. Um, but we've not yet received a single allocation because we're tied up in this clarification phase. To be fair to them, it is a massive amount of materials. Every submission we make to the state is twenty-seven separate applications. And then the federal application, they allow us to submit as just one campus, but that also means a campus of twenty-seven buildings. And so if every architectural plan set has forty documents, you know, multiply that by twenty-seven and, uh, it's just a huge amount of material. But the short answer is, once we get the part two on, from the National Park Service, around twenty percent of the total cost. With the state, once we, once we clear this hurdle of going back and forth with clarifications, we would hope to see piecemeal allocations come in. Interesting thing about the state is that you don't need to have all of your state historic tax credits in hand before you start construction. So we have an anticipated thirty-month construction, uh, period on this project and you can keep applying for all of your ten rounds in those thirty months, um, as we go. So it's a, it's a little bit more of an art than a science on that.
Amanda, what's the, the cutoff when you could, when you have to stop applying for those state historic credits? Is it?
It's one of the occupancy milestones. Yeah, yeah, it's the substantial completion or certificate, certificate of occupancy. We just had a mill in Lawrence that received it, uh, they, we received an allocation, um, after our ribbon cutting. So that was great news for the project. And the way that works in a closing is you, um, you have your legal documents written such that there's the option, you know, you say, we've received X amount of state historic tax credits and it could be X amount more and you factor that into the loans and the underwriting with all of the parties that come together for the closing.
And you've got to have a lot of drawings to get the historic tax credits, but you don't have, so it's complicated.
So we've got the, yeah, we've got the drawings at a point where the National Park Service and Mass Historic wanted to see them. So that's why we've advanced them into DDs because we said, well, we're not going to start to get this funding until we spend the money to get the drawings here. But it's, it's, you know, we've talked about this before. It's, it's a dance of how much do you spend in pre-development before you hit certain milestones with the state? Um, and that's, you know, the owner or our principal likes to say, that's how development companies go under, you know, is spending too much money in pre-development. So we really have to tie our advance of design to these tangible milestones that will get us, you know, it's, it's the critical path items to closing, really.
Well, thank you for working on this as much as you guys have at Trinity and for the progress that you've made to date. So thank you.
Thank you, it's our pleasure.
Got three probably peripheral questions. The first one is that, is that, it sounds like if you move into part two approval with the National Park Service, it, it, I have an impression- The first one is that, is that, it sounds like if you move into part two approval with the National Park Service, it it, I have an impression from the start of this, that the National Park Service had, early in the process, some sort of unexpected requirements or I'm guessing this far along, the National Park Service is a more predictable organization that doesn't necessarily present a lot of concerns around them coming in with off, off, unexpect, I won't say off the wall, unexpected requests or anything like that. Is that fair?
I think that is fair. You know, the the, both the National Park Service and Mass Historic follow very strict standards of re rehabilitation. And so I think they try to judge projects equally. The interesting thing about, you know, their process is that they are working in tandem. So some things maybe just Mass Historic asked for, maybe just the Park Service asked for, but they're doing their review in tandem, which uh, we feel is going to behoove the project because we've gotten everyone on board. There aren't going to be different opinions of what's acceptable. So while this clarifications process is now on, you know, month nine or something like that, um, I real, it really shows the attention that NPS and MHC are giving to the project. A few years ago, I think it was twenty twenty-two, when we were first starting to engage the Park Service, tell them that we were applying, they had their first site tour since COVID. Um, and the Medfield State Hospital was in their first trip of projects to come to from Washington DC. So they are very aware of this project, very interested in it. Uh, Secretary Galvin at the state level who oversees Mass Historic is personally aware of the project and, you know, assures us when we see him that, uh, you know, his staff are working diligently on it. It's just, as you guys saw, so much material.
Second question, and and I'm, I'm, I have an impression because it hasn't come up, and I think the last two times we've had meetings. My sense is that the gun range issue may not yet be resolved because I heard the guns go on Monday, I think it was, but that that has originally had that checked off my mind is probably the top of the pile of showstoppers. I'm thinking that while it may not yet be fully resolved, that there's grounds for optimism, that that's, that's not holding you back at this, at this point in time. Still got to get resolved, but it's not like a major consideration. It seems like it's going in a good direction. Is that a fair impression on my part?
I think that's a fair impression.
Okay. And then the third question, and and actually, uh, it's some of the communications that have come in from Belforge around the deterioration of the infirmary building. Is there anything going on? And and the context here, as I'm saying, as as you're talking with the state, Secretary Augustus, this whole thing is being stretched out a bit, not, 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 you know, years and years, but to what extent does that delay change the economy? And I'm trying to get specific with you, just directionally. Does that present significant complications for Trinity around thinking about the buildings? You know, the longer we wait, the worse the buildings are. Is there, is that a major dynamic in the thought process or? And part of that is, and if it is, is the state aware that that's part of a dynamic that everybody ought to be thinking about?
The state is certainly aware. Every time we talk to folks, we reiterate, you know, that every year counts. That being said, some of them have sat vacant for fifty years, so fifty to fifty-one. You know, um, it it's all part of it. It's this dance that we're doing of, we need this so this can happen, we need this, you know, and so I think our job at Trinity is telling everyone about the pieces that need to come together. Uh, and I have no doubt that that folks at the state and in Secretary Augustus's office are are very aware of. The the interesting part of this project is not only, you know, from the one-stop funding, it's a, it's a big infrastructure project, but it's also a big historic project, and both have been clearly made important at the state level uh in the Healy Driscoll administration. And so um, I think we've got a really good story here. Every, every time we have an elected representative or constituent group come out to the site, people are amazed at this asset that Medfield has and and the foresight of planning that you folks have all put into what you wanted to see happen there.
So I have grounds to sleep a little more soundly now than I have been. Okay, good. Thank you.
You know, getting, getting that one-stop allocation last year, we all saw as very important momentum. You know, even though it was for kind of off-site and design work, it's not the home run that maybe we wanted. Um, you know, it wouldn't suit the state to put five million dollars into something they didn't see any potential in, right?
That's all I have.
Well, I have to believe that the state, with all of the conversations that are going on about housing, sees this as something that, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel. Right? I mean, the the buildings are there now. It's just a matter of rehabbing them and getting the funding, obviously, that's incredibly important.
Right.
Um, I do have two questions because I look out and I see a couple of neighbors that live near the project. How has the communication been going? Has there been any communication between Trinity and the neighbors that are surrounding the property?
Yes. So the Long Meadow and Evergreen neighbors, last year, we had a few kind of public and uh just internal with the neighborhood meetings throughout the planning board process. Um, and then when we hired our new construction manager, Dan Moore, he engaged directly with the Long Meadow and Evergreen group. He had a site walk with a group of um stakeholders to kind of see where the parking lot would be. Uh, once we get the subdivision plan, he will be able to go out there and actually stake the parking lot. So, you know, we can have an event, we can invite the select board and the planning board if we want, uh, you know, we'll take your direction on that. But when we get that infrastructure design and then we can have the subdivision plan, then we'll be able to stake it out for them, as we said. Another big uh uh milestone for that group was the storm water runoff. So it had come where to us in the past that, you know, some changes on the hospital campus uh made storm water go into people's backyards, and so we want to make sure that our storm water management plan accounts for that and that we're being very transparent with folks about what kind of infrastructure we're putting in and how it will work with their backyards, you know, hopefully benefit their backyards. Um, so those two things are very contingent on getting VHB engaged and getting that infrastructure design underway.
Okay. And then you brought, touched upon something that I know we talked about probably six months ago, maybe nine months ago, Christine, was we, we haven't done the final walkthrough. Like, like, and I think of this, when I go around, if I walk the perimeter of the state hospital property and I come up near the cottages, and then I go around the back so that building thirteen hours to my left, that corner is kind of funky, right? And it's so, we've, we've bantered back and forth with like, well, how is that really going to look? And where will the the boundary lines be for town-owned property that citizens can freely walk on and not feel like they're invading any of the land that is technically under Trinity? And like, and where will potentially, as you said, the parking lot be? How will the roads come? Do we have a rough idea as to when that will? Is that?
That'll be part of the subdivision plan.
So we'll do that before it gets to that point.
We'll start having that. Okay.
All right, because that'll be important.
Yeah. And that, you know, that can be this summer. Um, I don't know about the, to the site walk, but the subdivision plan and getting VHB working on the subdivision plan, um, that's their first scope of work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. And I think, other than that, um, I'm good. Any questions from the audience?
Uh, well, I have one more slide, too.
Oh, one more, okay.
It's just about MBTA stuff.
Well, why don't we, if you don't mind, let me just ask a quick, from, from the audience, just because this, we're talking about the actual project itself.
Sure.
Um, if, if, first and foremost, microphone, whoever that may be, if anyone has any questions, um, please use the microphone.
I'm Bill Mussero, thirty-six, Evergreen Way. Just a, uh, thank you, Amanda, for everything. I was on one of the last walk that they had with the construction manager, Dan Moore, right?
Yeah.
Uh, there's still an issue, and you did touch on it, uh, on the uh, the light, light pollution issues. So the neighbors are still concerned about that as well, so. And nothing's been resolved, but I mean, at least they've had some experience. It's been a, maybe what, a month and a half or whatever, two months since they had the walk with Dan, so they haven't had anything lately. But again, I understand where you are, you know, your progress is is moving forward and it will eventually happen, so thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I will just say that is part of our photometrics plan. That is a requirement to go back to the planning board for the final site plan approval. So I anticipate that part of the process will happen after the subdivision plan.
Okay, great. All right, now MBTA communities, that is important.
Okay, so um, the MBTA Communities Act, I'm not going to go into it any more than folks in this room want me to. Uh, but I spoke more toward efforts that are ongoing. Um, we've seen just really great cooperation working in Medfield between Trinity, the town, other groups in town, the Belforge Arts Center. Um, and so I think it's really important in this process that we were able to communicate the impact that MBTA communities compliance has on the MSH campus. And by the campus, I hope Gene will let me speak for both of our projects because we seek the same funding sources. And those are the sources in the one-stop that we're applying for with April, uh, in May and June. So if Medfield becomes non-compliant with the MBTA Communities Act, which we're confident won't happen because of all of the great organization efforts that Maria, the planning board and select board jointly and other folks in town have been putting in. If that were to happen, Trinity and Belforge would not be eligible for the resources that we need for public infrastructure and for hazardous materials for mediation. Those are on the state's list of if you don't comply with this act, you lose eligibility for these grants. So even though the MBTA proposed zoning in town does not impact the hospital campus, that's the tie back to the project, and I just want to make sure the folks at home really understand that. So in order to engage in these conversations, um, you know, I attended all of the public hearings that the planning board and select board jointly had in March and April, um, and then listened in on the warrant committee. Uh, you know, it seemed like there was a lot of good discussion. From Trinity's perspective, the first meeting that we went to maybe had a a little bit more contentiousness. And by the last meeting, folks didn't even have any questions because the town had, you know, done such a um uh impactful job with the education piece. So, um, you know, we just, really the point here is we want to be a partner. If there's anything that the town needs to um get this message out, we're actually working on some educational efforts. So uh, on the twenty-seventh of March, we did a site walk with Representative Vaughn so that he was keenly aware of the link between this compliance and the MSH project. He's hugely supportive of the project, so it's great to have another champion in the legislature um, and fully kind of understood that message. Uh, Maria, this is nothing to do with us, but Maria's doing coffee with a planner in person, and so we're really hopeful that, you know, she is the resource in terms of this project. I, I've seen all the work that she's been putting in, and so really, I hope, especially the folks at home, if anyone has questions, go talk to Maria, you know, she, she is a civil servant through and through and and knows this better than any of us. Um, and then we're working in tandem, and what you can see on the right side of the page or screen, depending on what you're looking at, is that, um, you know, we've worked on a multi-step mailer campaign, really not one way or the other, but just in educating the town of, hey, this is what's before us. This is what the planning board has to say about it. Uh, this is how it impacts the MSH campus. And also just a reminder to vote, because sometimes life gets busy and we forget that town meeting is May sixth, so. And finally, we're working on uh transforming that information that the planning board, that Maria and the town have put together, and doing kind of a a um combined like social media and email campaign. So if anyone, you know, I know some folks in this room have a, an a listserv of of emails that they get things out to. If anyone at home has, you know, a group chat that they want to send things to so their friends know about what's going on, you know, really the best resource is the FAQs on the town's website. Um, and I hope that, you know, over the next month, no one in Medfield could say that they didn't know that this was coming or that they, they weren't made aware of it.
We know a few will miss it. That, we'll just accept, I'll check that box off. You mentioned the coffee. Is that tomorrow? Is that the next one? Is it tomorrow at the library?
It is.
Yeah, tomorrow for what? Is it one to four?
Uh, is it one to four? I wasn't sure if it was one to three, but yeah.
Because I think what's great, that the fact she's doing that, is it takes away the, some people get intimidated when they get in front of a microphone. Obviously, the three of us don't. Um, but if they do, you know, I want them to make sure that they can sit with her, they can hear from her clearly. You know, and and you said something that I'm hearing other towns are not experiencing, that we are in this together. I mean, I think the planning board has done an absolutely phenomenal job, and they've done a great job even communicating to the residents that are in the areas that are going to be part of the overlay district. Um, and then certainly the select board, we support what they're doing because we know it's, it's uh, in step with what we're trying to do as a town to provide some housing um, and and follow what the whole MBTA Communities Act is all about, right? So uh, I think it's great, so.
So Amanda, can you just make it clear to our residents what happens if we don't pass the MBTA Communities Act zoning change?
Sure. So I'll only speak to my project specifically. Uh, if that happens, Trinity and subsequently Belforge would not be available, would not have these grant funds available. And so that means that our projects are, my project specifically, is no longer financially viable. We have a forty-five million dollar outstanding need between the public infrastructure and the hazardous materials for mediation. We're working very hard, April, the town, all of us, working very hard to uh come up with a feasible financing plan with the state. But if the town becomes non-compliant, it has, you know, nothing to do specifically with our project, but we will be ineligible for that. Down the line, if the Medfield State Hospital project does not go forward, the town will not receive up to six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in net new tax revenue uh annually. And this, you know, should the Medfield State Hospital project be successful, that'll be the first time that uh the campus is on the tax roll in history. So it's net new revenue for the town. Uh, in addition, the Trinity project will push the town up to, I think, around seventeen percent of its subsidized housing inventory, putting the town into safe harbor from unfriendly forty B developments. Right now, I think the town, you guys have done a really great job, especially compared to some of your neighboring towns. Um, but I think the town's at nine point five percent right now. So right now, the town is subject to this, but should the Trinity project be successful, it would be up to seventeen, well over the threshold.
So it sounds like the short answer is Trinity will stop work on the project if the MBTA zoning doesn't pass.
Trinity would have to find a whole new plan with resources we don't yet know about.
Thank you.
Uh, just a observation on the two cards. I don't know if it was just serendipitous at our house, but they, I think they both showed up on Saturday, and I'm not sure if that was all deliberate coordination between the two issuance, but both the fact they both showed up at the same time, the fact that they were formatted in a way that looked like they were sort of, you know, a coordinated set. And then the words that were on both, like, it was interesting because we had had some discussions around messaging. The two cards combined were complimentary in a very useful way, in my view. Uh, certainly the message about the state hospital is important. Uh, you know, the town, I think, has had an intention to try to go in a direction that makes it easy for people, for a lot of different people to live here and to try to make it a good place to live. And I think before all the imposed requirements came in, we were already doing that. Uh, and I, again, I would echo your compliments, the planning board. The, the fact that the planning board was able to really come up with a scheme and said, listen, this is sort of what we were going to do anyway. We didn't, we didn't have to completely do a whole bunch of different stuff. Yeah, it's, you know, we're doing it under a specific set of requirements and we're doing it a certain way. But we haven't really been forced to get off of the core direction we were trying to take the town. So there's a lot of good reasons why you could have philosophical discussions about state taking local authority. Fine, this isn't the time to do it. Uh, and for us at least, we figured out how to accommodate this and get the, the important things we're trying to get done in this town done, so.
I would, I would suggest that uh, if this will make the town better regardless of whether the state's forcing us to do it or not, we should be doing it.
I won't, I won't concede the issue around state's law authority, but for sure, without a doubt. I am one hundred, I'm a thousand percent convinced that if Trinity is allowed to complete this project successfully, this town, even the people who know that are already here, this town is going to be a much different and even better town than we are right now. That, that location and what's planned for that is unbelievable, and I, I include Belforge. The whole mix is phenomenal. And there was a lot of work by the town, but we also had to find a company that was willing to take on something that is ambitious, uh, reflected, I think. I think, I forget, there's one of our, one of our last comments that the comment was made, oh, Trinity likes to do these kinds of things. You know, the, the, and that means something because that's not, Trinity thinks they can make a lot of money. I mean, I hope you do, but Trinity doesn't do this because we think we can make a lot of money. There is a, there is an aesthetic to this that's seriously important. And so it's been interesting to see the cross currents that make things, ah, maybe not, maybe so, and it's long, it's, it's gone on long enough where I realize that's just the nature of the beast, so that's okay, don't need to panic, but.
And our residents have told us that the aesthetic at the hospital is exceedingly important to them. They wanted us to keep the building, so.
They had the opportunity to cash in and they elected not to. I was delighted to see that.
Well, but, but just saying that, I think something that I've said this in a couple of meetings that I've sat in on the various planning board and um, Maria hosted meetings is, when someone approaches anyone that's in the know and says, well, you know, why should I go for this? The first question I would ask anyone is, did you vote, yeah, did you go to the special time meeting in June of twenty twenty-two? If you did, were you one of the seven hundred people that said yes? Right then and there is why you need to say yes. Right then and there is why you need to say yes, because that yes only happens if we're able to do this, right? And I even look at Jean and maybe speaking out of turn, but if you don't happen, you don't get the million dollars. You're another million dollars behind because you're not going to go forward and you're not going to give the town of Medfield or anybody any money, you can't go forward. So it's just so important that we know what we want and we've taken so much time to get this, this project where it is. You know, this MBTA team, this came up after we all agreed to go forward. So this is a curve ball in the project, but it doesn't mean we can't move forward. Just means we need to educate. And I know, I guess, I know a town meeting, you'll speak to this when we, when this warrant article comes up. And it's something that is so near and dear to your heart that um, you know, we, the, the state, there are certain towns that are saying the state doesn't have the right to do it. Those, those states, those towns that want to fight that battle all the powers wrong, that's not our fight. Our fight is to make sure that what, what both of these gentlemen just said, it's just so important to this town that we stay focused, we keep the, 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 the answer simple, because it really is a simple answer. And, and again, I think that what Maria's doing, trying to have uh, uh, meet and greets, and I know our town moderator is doing, he's hosting an event, I think, can I speak to that tonight? Okay. On the Monday before the town meeting. And he's doing it so again, someone that may have a question that doesn't want to have to step up to the microphone, uh, but they can meet with him. He's fantastic or excited for our new moderator. Um, but this would be the perfect opportunity to then have that question. And I'm sure people are going to ask like, well, you know, do we, we're letting the town, the town be bullied by the state? No, it's got nothing to do with that whatsoever, right? We, it works for our town. So why would we fight something when it, by doing it, it absolutely benefits our town and our residents? So. I think we're good. Any, I will throw, any questions?
Chris, I'm Sam Kerr Street. This is more of a public service announcement, just piggybacking on.
Pete's comment about the aesthetics, we currently have, we're doing Medfield History Weekend, that weekend of the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, and we have a walking tour of the Medfield State Hospital campus at eleven o'clock on Sunday, the twenty-eighth. We already have forty-some people signed up for it. Um, so if anybody's listening in the audience, um, out in the public, who's just curious, hasn't visited the site yet, wants to see the aesthetics, this is a great opportunity to just walk the campus.
Chris, tell them the time.
Eleven, eleven AM, and the Medfield Historical Society dot org is where the ticket information is. And is, if there's anybody from Trinity, or we are charging a very small, tiny fee. Um, but if there's anybody from Trinity or anybody from the project that wants to toggle on, let me know and we'll comp your tickets.
Then you're going to have them stand in downtown and cheer on the baseball and softball before that goes later that afternoon at four o'clock.
So there you go.
Okay. You good?
I might have one more. Oh, my, my one more is our standing, uh, continued engagement. Oh, sorry, Frank.
No, 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 no.
This is minor. And then I also just want to echo, this is probably the last public hearing before, what, this is the last public hearing before we'll be submitting the One Stop, and that is something that the town is the applicant on. We have our expert here, April Anderson, who uh, has a hundred percent success rate, actually, with uh, receiving these awards, including last year when she uh, worked with the town to get the five million dollar award. So I just, if anyone in this room or at home has any questions about the One Stop, about what grants are serviced by the One Stop, um, please take advantage of the resource that we have here.
Any questions?
Okay, yeah.
Hundred percent, right?
I know, don't you, you said them, I know, don't you.
It's why we hired her, it hasn't.
Deputy chief thought he had a little pressure, whoo.
No, Mo and I look at each other and we're like, little does he know. No. All right. I have my continued partnership and it's really quick. And I know you guys have many more agenda items, so I'll just go over it quickly here. So, um, we're going to continue to engage on the MBTA Communities Act uh, through town meeting. We're going to facilitate monthly updates to the Town Administrator's Letter. We've done the last three. It's been a cool way. Um, I haven't heard much feedback from that personally, but uh, we enjoy a monthly little blip in there to, to keep you all informed of what's going on. Um, Trinity and the town are going to continue to work together to oversee that first phase of the Housing Works and UTP grant work. So that building six-shoring that has that investigation of the campus, the VHB a hundred percent design and the Eversource electric grid design. Um, we'll be looking for approval of the second submission to the One Stop. So the timeline for you guys on that will be between town meeting and um, the beginning of June. So it will, we'll give everyone a breather after town meeting, but that, you know, is, is in our, is in our forefront right here. Um, and then we are looking for a letter of support tonight for our April round of the Mass Historic. Um, and after the town meeting and after the One Stop, we'll um, have to engage about the LDA and just kind of a real uh, pathway to housing production and timeline to closing. So again, I think once we're able to engage with the state, hopefully get their approval of a strategy, then we'll have a lot more clarity on, on that. That's all.
Do I have a motion for the?
Move that we sign a letter of support for the OSH project for the next round of state historic tax credits.
Second.
All right, all those approve.
Yeah.
Against silent, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You got off easy. All right, moving along here. So, a little behind on the seven PM, but school building committee to provide updates with select board.
Hi, everybody. I'm Carolyn Casey. I'm a member of the School Building Committee, and I'm here just to sort of update you and what we've been doing the last couple of months. And afterwards, if you have questions for me, just take some time for questions. Um, so after we didn't get into the MSBA program in December, uh, the next thing the committee did is talk about, do we want to apply again? It's a pretty easy yes. And uh, thank you to the select board and school committee. We sent the letter in, so we're on the list, fingers crossed that we'll get into the program in December for twenty twenty-four. After that, the next thing we were focusing on um, was updating our social presence. So we opened a Facebook page. We have a uh, spot on the town website where we give updates. We now have a Facebook page. If any of you have a Facebook account, you can put in your search box, the Medfield School Building Committee. And we have our written updates as well as some fun videos after each meeting. Uh, we do a little two to three minute video giving you a little update about what's going on. And I realized that the chief, uh, Bob Meaney's here, I was going to say the chief, um, is here. He's also in the School Building Committee uh, with me. Yep. I'm back. Um, so our next step into more social interaction with the community is we're thinking about uh, doing some forums in May. And what we decided after we didn't get into the program is what could we accomplish in this next year before we find out in December if we get in or not? And we decided location is probably something that we can tackle this year. So we have been studying possible locations for a new school or a new, or an addition renovation on the Dale Street property. So I want to be real clear there. It could be a new school on the Dale Street property, or it could be an addition renovation. And so what we are hoping to do is just get feedback from the community about uh, possible locations and what they might be in favor of. And then we'll probably do another survey. We did a survey a year ago, trying to get feedback on how people voted the last time, what their concerns were. We got a very good turnout, twelve hundred votes, or twelve hundred responses. And so our thought is to spend May, June, maybe July, depending on where we are, and try to get some clarity on what the community feels would be the right location going forward. Um, the other piece we've been working on is Steve Callahan of the Warrant Committee, the co-chair, did a fabulous uh, financial um, update for us about what uh, elementary school with four hundred to five hundred kids might cost, what that tax impact would be. I'm going to encourage anyone, uh, we have it on our website page, the link, so you can watch it. You can see it on the um, YouTube for the Medfield community. It's a lot of information. And what it will give you is an overview of the kind of money a new school costs nowadays and what that tax impact uh, would be with MSBA funding and without it. Uh, we're, uh, the School Building Committee is taking, uh, we're writing a community letter about his presentation and also going to put in some information about our forums. We're working on that now. Going to try to get that out in the next couple of weeks. Um, so those are the main big things we've been working on for the, you know, since the year started, January, February, March, and our April meeting. Um, questions that you might have for me?
Uh, thank you. Um, so in terms of determining location this year, I think that's an excellent idea. Are, are, are the doors open to any locations or all locations?
So we looked at what available property the town has, and we looked at what was done before on the previous School Building Committee. And really, it comes down to, if you want to look at the size you needed for a school and the type of land, there's three properties, which is the Wheelock School, the Dale Street School, and across from the hospital. Uh, I forget what you call that.
South of Hospital Road.
Yeah.
Sledding Hill.
Yeah. And the problem is though, is that that location doesn't have the infrastructure for a school. And it's on the very edge of town and a lot of people weren't comfortable with that. So we're really down to sort of the same two locations that the previous committee came up with, which is Wheelock and Dale Street. So those will be the two locations that we will be talking about with the community to get the pros and cons of what people are thinking, questions people have, and trying to get people to, you know, see where the majority of town supports.
So those are the two likely locations in my mind. Um, and I guess my next question is then, have you thought about ways of trying to get the temperature of the, of the town? Because clearly the town was split about those locations the last time.
Right. So we want to start with forums. We're going to try to do an evening forum, a Sunday forum, a forum at the senior center, and a forum late morning. And just open it up.
Let people.
Invite people to come. We'll share some pros and cons that we thought of and information that we have about the locations. But then we also want to hear from other people. What pros and cons do you have about these two sites? What are your questions? And then we want to put all that information together, then decide, do we need maybe another forum or another method of communication? Finally, getting us to the point where we'd like to do a survey like we did before, sending it out to as many people as we can and, and see what happens. And if we don't get enough response, then we need to keep thinking of other ways to find out.
I've always been fascinated by the fact that our, that Dick Scaleri, who lived across the street from both of us, uh, worked in marketing and told me that in marketing, you can ask four hundred people uh, questions and you can get statistically correct answers. And I've often thought that that would be an interesting way to figure out what a town of like Medfield wants, is to do a statistical sampling and, and see what the residents really want.
Yeah. A year ago in our first survey, they said we'll probably get one to two hundred responses, and we got twelve hundred.
But it's a, it's a self-selecting. It's not a statistically.
Exactly. Um, and that was the same comment that we have, we have a marketing person on our committee. Um, the piece is I just, we all would really want the community to be part of these discussions to make sure they have a chance to share their thoughts, concerns, pros, cons. They feel involved in it. And if they want to let us know, then they have a means to let us know before we start moving ahead on building something. Right? This is, this is what we've agreed to from a year ago when we were first formed, that we're going to get as much community input as we can.
Good, good. Thank you for the report and the information. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Does the committee have a set of criteria on how you're going to choose a location?
We have not uh, listed out a set of criteria. What we did do is look at the work that's already been done on the things you had to look at when you were finding a location. And that, if you look at those reports, which are available online to see, you'll see in depth the studies they did in terms of, you know, water, wetlands, infrastructure, space, uh, neighborhoods, locations, and they, you know, they did that work and looked at available parcels in town. Redgate Farm, I think, Christine, that's the other one, right? Is the other piece that was also um, talked about, but um, is that how you say it?
Yeah, well, only because it's town.
Yeah. Um, what's it?
Yeah, but I, I'd have to look, I don't think Redgate was taken as municipal purposes, though. I think Redgate was, was conservation.
I think so. I think that's correct. I think it's Article ninety-seven land.
Yeah, so that rules it.
So it was like one of those that had enough land but wasn't taken for the.
Yeah, it would, it wouldn't fit the purpose.
It wouldn't fit the purpose. Not that you can't. I mean, there is a process, right, Mark? You can go through to change land, but it's not an easy process.
That's correct. It's not an easy process.
Right.
What goals does the building committee have in regard to progressing toward the design of the school?
So that is going to. Yeah. So that's going to be a conversation that we're going to have next. We decided to focus on location first for a couple of reasons. Um, if you get accepted into MSBA, you have to do a feasibility study. And they're expensive. So if we were to start a feasibility study now, we'd have to redo it if we get in the program. So there's this piece of how much money do we want to spend that we'd have to spend again to do a feasibility if we got in the program. If we didn't get in the program and the town decided to fund it itself, then you could use all your work. And so we're, we've been discussing how much do we want to do and how much, you know, how much do you want to spend before you know? And it seems at this point that people are pretty committed to giving it one more year to see if we can get in in December twenty twenty-four.
That ties into my next question. And this is the same question I asked Dr. Marsden and asked Tim Knight uh, and Mike, Mike Weber has relayed the conversation I have with him.
Yeah.
I, recognizing this bylaw, I have no opinion on which direction the town should go. Because I don't think we have any role in the time to turn. And that, the only issue I had was to hear whether this in fact was the last year we were going to take a run at MSBA. And then at that point, we then either said we fish or cut bait in November, and if we don't get in, then we move out on our own. Or if the answer is no, we're going to, we're going to wait X number of years to try to get in, then my only issue was, I don't want to, I personally would not want to see the town get hit with emergency capital expenses to keep the Dale Street School running. So my only, my only issue was, if that's the direction that the school committee chooses, to make sure that there's a capital projection, which is designed to make sure we don't get surprises during the time of the line on the Dale Street School.
Yeah. And that is the big question. We have talked about it. We have not voted on it. So I'm speaking, sort of my perception is that people want to give it one more try. And then it's time to ask the community, you know, do you want to move ahead? You know, and you end up funding it, understanding that what we get, you know, is just reimbursement on eligible expenses in the program. Sometimes people have a exaggerated perception of how much money we get. For instance, Westwood um, is building, it uh, it started at eighty-seven million, but it was before the pandemic, so it turned out to be ninety-three million. And what they got uh, from MSBA was eighteen million and something.
Yeah, that, that's the same, I think that's the same thing you could do here when we had the first project, we talked about MSBA money. Money, but if you now look at how much money we're actually taking on.
Right.
Then it's, and I'm not arguing one way or the other. It's just that it's like, you could easily see all that evaporate.
Yeah, and Gus, that is all what we're in that same thing is, well, we're spending money and then how much you get, and prices might go up and costs might go up, or interest rates, so, you know.
So this is editorial. My quick reaction to that location is the first thing is like, why would you go to the most sensitive nerve in the last project and start rubbing it? So that, that was the reaction I had to that. And that, that's why I asked the question about criteria, because all editorial, okay? This is strictly, simply asking people what they want about some sort of a framework to react to that. You know, it's great to take public input, but to use public input as the path to an answer to the question, this strikes me as being something that will just relight the fire that we had last time. If there was a, if there was a framework for saying, listen, here's what we need to get, you know, here's what we're trying to accomplish with our decision on location. get, you know, here's what we're trying to accomplish with our decision on location. Now, we would like your input on what you think best meets that need. From my, it's a pin, from my standpoint, that would get us to a more productive output than sort of the more open-ended surveys we sometimes go through, just what you want. I don't think, it doesn't feel to me like that's gonna get us to a good, good answer on that, but that's editorial. And that's it, cause I, it was a long-term MSBA decision, and I was trying to find out whether it had one. And my issue is, well, I want you to do that, or I want you to do that, it's just that a year from now, one answer will be fine. The other answer, I won't, the other idea of sticking with it, I sure as heck want, if that's where we're going, I want to see a capital projection this year, not, oh, let's go out and merry-go-round yet another year, and then we can maybe get the capital. So, it's, that's all I'm looking for is, if we're going that way, then put our capital projection of what that's gonna cost, uh, from, to keep the Dale Street School running.
I will share that with the school building committee, and we're all in the same piece as you, is trying to make those decisions. And I agree with you, the location is hard. It is one, though, we can do without spending a lot of money. We, we can try to see where the town is in that decision. People think they know where the town is based on the last vote, but, but we wanna make, we want more information than that.
Boy, and then there's a bunch of implications, financial implications around the Dale Street School that also claim that.
Right.
Only because, the, the article for this year's funding of the building committee is...
650,000.
650.
To begin some of the studies that Carolyn's talking about tonight, up until feasibility study is labeled in there as a possibility.
Right.
So, here, and this is, this is something for the building committee to weigh. There was a chunk of money that we provided, 250,000?
They have 500,000 currently.
500,000 right now. I have bad with numbers.
Two, two years of 250.
Better than that. So, 500,000, last year when we were talking, I think, I think it was Mike saying, well, gee, we're not really ready to start, maybe we shouldn't do anything, but the thought was, listen, let's get you some money here so that you can do the things that you think you need to do. This year, my question, I'm not arguing one way or the other, I'm playing out the town, the town meeting and how the public will view another 650,000 dollars. It makes sense as a feasibility study funding. I'm just trying to think of how the public will react at town meeting to having another 650,000 added in, but we're not actually gonna spend anything yet, and the question is, will that imperil the vote?
I don't, I don't think so, because if you receive MSBA funding or approval, not funding, but approval, in November, you're going to wanna hit the ground running.
Right.
And so, you need to allocate those funds now and not wait until next year's town meeting. That'll be another six months of waiting.
Yeah, if we got approval, then January, we're in. Feasibility, we're going. We don't wanna wait till May, so this way, we would have enough money.
And if you're not approved and you get out, then you...
Then we'd wanna start anyhow, right? And you know what? I just, I realized I forgot one thing about the update. We did an enrollment study. We hired Future Think, and that's in, you can see it online, it's attached to our website, and, um, you know, it, it gave projections going forward, nothing drastic, could stay the same, go a little bit down or a little bit up, but you might wanna look at it, but that is something we did use the money for.
500 to 650, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Carolyn, can I ask you about that? Cause I, I saw something about a, uh, study or numbers recently, projections for kindergarten kids, and, and it jumped to like 225 from 190, 180.
It drops too, drops before it does that.
It drops, yeah, they call it pandemic babies.
Right.
And so, it just goes up for one year and goes down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we'll have that little bubble that will, you know, carry on.
Yeah, I just saw the bubble part, I didn't see the out years beyond it, so thank you.
Yeah, that is, you're right, that is there, so, yeah.
So, I, I appreciate the update. I, I do echo Gus's sentiment about the location. If it's just asked straight up, Dale Street or Wheelock, I don't think we're gonna get the answer, that's an educated response. I think it, and listen, I'm, anyone who knows why I even sit in this chair is, I was passionately involved back in the day, and, and the traffic impact, if we were to look at Wheelock, we need to let everybody know what the true genuine traffic impact, it's not just putting a school there, it is all that flow of traffic, and then what may be done to prevent people from going through neighborhoods, and, you know, you can't really go down Elm and over Mindbrook. I mean, it becomes, it starts to paint a different picture, so, um, again, mine's like an editorial where I, I think the, the question, I hear this from so many of the young families that I bump into as I travel around, they're like, if I had only known, we could've gotten a school, if we didn't fight this, right? Cause so many people didn't understand, and if they just knew that there was going to be a contingent that said, Dale was not a good, Dale was a great location, we're making use of a building that we're gonna have to do another $20 million to if we didn't, there are all these different things, like if I'd only known. And, and that's where, if you ask that question, it just needs to be not so generic, as you've gotta coach it with, if you go here, this is what is going to be impacted, these are the things that have to take place for any sort of traffic flow at one location, and if we do, you know, the Dale, you know, think about, you know, what, what may need to be done. And, and this is, my next comment's probably not gonna be well-received, but this is the, the business side of me, the corporate side. You know, if I was going to do a booth at CES, sure, I'd like to have the booth that Microsoft had, but I was a small business unit that I was given 3.5 million dollars, it's what I had, I had to figure it out, right? I, I really question, if we put a nugget out there that says, okay, if we, if we give you, if we, if you guys are given roughly, let's just say 70 million, and you go, ah, can't do it, it's like, okay, then you get nothing. I think 70 million is better, and I'm not saying that's the magic number, but there needs to be a number that people think about and not be the, build it, this is the bill, this is what we now have to argue for, versus can we attempt to look at it truly realistically and say, anything we do in theory is gonna be better than what's there today? Maybe it's not gonna be the five stars, setting the record for the state of Massachusetts and the rest of the country for what a two-grade school could be, but it is a heck of a lot better than what exists today. And I just think that there's just so many costs coming at the town, that I'm hoping that that is one of the angles, and it's not, well, this is what the architect said, so this is what it has to be. It's hard for me to swallow.
Yeah, and we have been talking, we'll talk more about that, as to, well, what do you get for 50 million? Right? Especially if you're looking at Dale. What do you get on a renovation for 50 million, or 60, or 70? And those are questions, you know, to ask an architect and, you know, a small feasibility or a big feasibility when you're going forward. And I do wanna say, when I, when I was talking about asking people location, we were gonna put up information and the pros and cons that we've already gained, but I also want to give the community a chance to tell us other things that we might not have heard, and have them ask questions about some of the things that people have said. So, it's not gonna be just, tell us what you think, too. It's, it's gonna be more, here's what we know about these two locations, this is what people have told us, pros and cons, what do you think, do you agree, et cetera? And there, there's a weird piece in here, it's like a chicken and egg thing, you know? It's hard to pick a location if you don't know what you're gonna build. Well, it's hard to decide what to build if I don't know the location, you know? So, we're, it's a, it's a little, it's a little tough piece in there, and because we're going for MSBA money, it, to do a feasibility and figure out what you wanna build now, and then have, and you get the money, you have to redo it.
Right, right, right.
It's a million that we just kinda can't use, so that's why we're gonna push the location piece. And it may turn out that the, no, we can't even get a majority with the location, it's 50/50, and then as a committee, then we have to think about that.
Can you figure out, not that you necessarily be able to, but can you figure out the location in advance of MS being committed?
Yes, yes, you can, and that's...
As long as you go through that process?
It, it is, here's their big thing, that they want, they wanna know that a town is committed, any town, not just Medfield, to, uh, taking their money and using it, once they give it to you. So, we had a no vote. So, this is a way to show that we are committed, is to say, hey, we've been talking to people about a building and a location, and we have, you know, 70% of the people like this in our town, that's a, a strong sign that, one, the community's paying attention, two, the community is interested in fixing the Dale problem, and three, we have the beginnings of a plan, we have at least a location. You can do that before you get accepted.
You're gonna have to be really careful about how you orchestrate that.
I agree.
You're playing with fire, and, and I'm not saying it's impossible, but I'm trying to visualize how, how it would work, it's a, it's going to the hot button issue and say, we're gonna start by the hot button issue.
I, I will tell, though, I will tell you, Gus, we had tons of comments on the first survey, and it was, it was interesting in terms of location, and I'm not saying that this means what we're doing, but people's responses were, I voted for Wheelock, just build it at Dale.
Right.
I wanted a Dale, I mean...
They want a school.
They want a school.
Yeah, yeah.
And they, and some people really liked that first thing, but it didn't pass. And so, location might not be as big a factor as we might think, for some people who just want a school. And that came out in the survey, people want a school, to, want us to do something.
Yeah, there's very little debate about whether we need a school, and that's fair.
Yeah. And I can't stress enough, knowing, having sat across from at the time, the second in command for the MSBA, is no doubt in my mind, if we show any sign of we're still a divided town, I put every dollar on the line that says, we're not in MSBA in December, right? So, I think, I don't dispute what you're doing, cause I think we need to be able to show the town is coming together. No one agree, no one disagreed last time, I'll say, 98% of people, we need a new school. But the location and the dollar amount, and not having the answers about Dale, there's so many things left unanswered, so that I applaud what you're trying to do. I think if you start getting a signal that says, you know what, this is the message we're hearing, this is what we wanna communicate, the fact that you're doing everything you're doing right now is 100% important for all the people that said, COVID prevented me from communicating, I couldn't talk to so-and-so. So, getting ahead of this is huge, but getting the, getting, trying to get a feel for the community that we're all in this together.
Right.
Will make or break what happens in December, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Any questions, comments from the, all right, microphone, please. All right. All right, Jerry, you win, cause you're closest. That goes to Jeff.
Jerry Potts, 7 Curve Street. So, um, I applaud, I, I had put my name in as a volunteer, so I know when you're volunteering for the school building committee, after a failed vote, there's a place in heaven. So, let me just, just say that. And through personal reasons, I haven't been able to attend meetings, but I've been following these rapidly, because I have someone who listens to every single meeting in town. My, my concern is that we seem, and I'm not, I'm not against MSBA, so I, I cannot emphasize this enough, but we have seen it in five different permutations. The thing that we didn't see, and still hasn't seen, is a Dale Street option that is made as attractive as possible. So, you know, when we look at why the no vote happened, um, I was very much similar to Eileen, I was very much involved in why the no vote didn't happen, and I have raised with Mike Weber and, and others since, that we've yet to see a Dale Street option. If we were 100%, this was the only option we had, how would we make this work? How would we make a great school at Dale? Because I will always believe that the options we were showed were not good options. So, when I look at Watertown, which started in 2022 and, and did a self-funding of 61 million dollars for close to 500 students, um, we provided three or four other options of self-funded, including Wellesley, that have been in the 60 to 70 million dollar range as being self-funded projects. I don't think what Eileen is recommending we try to show the town is at least put a straw man up there of a realistic 65, 70 million dollar option that is self-funded. There were another, I won't get into it tonight, there were a number of assumptions that were made about the Dale Street location that were, were wrong, including swing space. We're sitting right now with, we had 3,100 students, um, in 2005, we're sitting at 2,500 students today, so we're 600 students less. The high school is about 250 to 300 students under its capacity. So, you could easily move, you know, a grade up, eighth grade move to the high school, fifth grade moves into the middle school, fourth, uh, fourth grade stays at Wheelock. There was $5 million that was assumed swing space cost that was gonna extend the project by almost two years for building modulators that no one wanted. So, what I would love to see the committee doing now, and I think it can do this, is look realistically at self-funding options, and look at options from other towns that have successfully been able to do this, so that the town has a good, you know, when they come to these meetings, a range of options that they can make the decision. Because as much as the MSBA is solid money, I'll tell you, Steve Callahan's, which everyone's saying these financials are amazing, is making an assumption that's unrealistic for what the MSBA is actually gonna cover. And so, those numbers that are going out are far more optimistic than they should be on what we're gonna get from the MSBA. So, I, I think what the town, the no voters wanna see is a good balanced discussion between MSBA, and we have seen every permutation of MSBA that we could ever see, right? We, we spent years on it. What we haven't seen is a realistic ad reno, and I'll go a step further, community center, Dale Street location, take the FAFF Center, take Dale Street, do an ad reno, and if it costs 75, 80 million dollars to do that, but we solve two of the most important projects in town, maybe we have more flexibility to do that. And I just think we have a missed opportunity here where we have some money that's been allocated, that the committee and the permanent building committee could actually be exploring those options, so that when we decide as a town, we've got the full range. Here's what MSBA will give us, we love it, cool, let's vote it. But here's a self-funded option that solves two problems, and you know what, it might be 80 million dollars when we pay on our own, but we get exactly what we want in a school. And I kinda thought that's what we were gonna have in this 18 months, was parallel paths. And it seems like we've, we've thrown more gasoline on the MSBA fire, but we still have all this unknown information, and it's not the location, it's getting more information about the Dale Street location, cause we got more than enough on the Wheelock location. So, I think we have gaps in knowledge about the Dale Street location that would help the town to make a better decision that people could get behind. And I think if we did that, people wanna build a school, I think there's a school to be built at Dale Street that can be financially reasonable, um, that's flexible enough to meet our needs, and I don't think we have to wait to be either accepted or buy the MSBA to fill in some of those gaps. So, I, I mentioned this to, um, to Mike, um, I say it here because I think that is where we should go, rather than the location, we should fill in a lot of the gaps on what a Dale Street could be, so that the town has an option, cause we, we've seen the Wheelock option, and it got voted down. So, that's my few words.
Jeff Hyman, 1 Metta Common Street. I wasn't gonna say any of that, but I do just support your comment there. You mentioned forums, when, just a question, when are the forums taking place, and how many are there going to be?
Um, we're planning it, so I don't have definite dates for you. Um, we'll have a conversation later this week, and then hopefully, we can start, um, putting out information and have exact, what we're trying to do, just so we could get as many community members as possible, is have an evening one, a weekend one, uh, we've been talking about a Sunday afternoon at 3:00, a late morning one, and one at the senior center.
Okay.
At the moment. Not, nothing, I just wanna be clear that nothing's finalized, this is, we're just trying to plan it out.
So, I guess you don't have a lot of time, you know, September, it sounds like, by then, you have to, you wanna have all your forums, kind of put people participating. It's going to be important to be how, how you design those, so that you are getting the most robust information. Again, they can be designed in such a way that you might get an answer to things you want, but we all know that it is what it is. And the goal, you know, there were yes votes and no votes, the yes votes are there, maybe either way, but your no votes are the, are the folks you have to convince. That's how I look at it. There were people that voted no, there were four precincts, one precinct was, you know, more positive than the other three. Those are the people you have to worry about. Using the Medfield State Hospital example, having the forums was extremely important to me, because it flipped me from, I want trees, to I want Trinity, bingo. I'm the person that needed, you need to flip. Or not, or listening to what Mr. Potts said, you can't, the same issues that were presented in this history and documentation and all that, they're still there. There's no forcing anything in any direction. So, what I'm hearing is, looking at it holistically, for real, no, in, you know, in a way that we get the information, you know, people need, to make the right decision, or it won't happen again. So, it, it's gotta be transparent, it has to be open, and not designed to get the answer you want, but the answer that we all need collectively. It has to be open and not designed to get the answer you want, but the answer that we all need collectively.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, Carol, can I ask one other question, I guess? Is in the building committee's efforts in coordinating the school committee, has the school committee ever articulated a clear, long-term strategy of where it's trying to pick the elementary grades? And the, the reason I'm bringing it up is that if, if the new school went into Wheelock and Dale closed down, I'm going to, for a minute, just say Memorial by itself with K and 1 won't be enough to keep school, a school anchored at Dale. So in fact, this is, if that's a direction, that's basically a direction that says, no, the town's strategy is to consolidate the, the elementary grades at Wheelock. Uh, that's an impl, you know, that's never gets, that never bubbles up to the surface. I'm just curious, because originally, right after the, the project, I had suggested when the initial statement of the schools came, I said, you know, if you were to say our plan is to have an upper elementary campus in one spot, perhaps Wheelock, whatever, and a lower elementary campus at Dale, that the next school, even if it doesn't go to the place that people wanted, the people who still thought a school should be in the other place would have said, yeah, but the strategy is going to tell us that we're going to have a school here too. That's a two-campus strategy. I, the, the school committee didn't choose to do that, which is their decision. But it strikes me that this is actually a decision that has a strategic dimension to it as well.
Well, we have two school committee members on our committee, just so. And we have talked over the last year and said to the, said, does the school committee want three grades or two in this new building or an ad-reno building? Um, and they talked about it, but they didn't take a vote. And we just talked about this again in our last meeting, because obviously it's a big, big impact there, what you're doing. Um, and Bob, hopefully I get, if I don't say this right, Bob, I want to hear from you. That they really just are fine with two grades in the building. And so we would just be replicating a 4, 5, and not a building big enough to do like a 3, 4, 5 and change.
That's a pragmatic financial decision. I'm asking for the strategy. You put two more grades down at Wheelock and then follow that with a 10, with another 10 years from now, the Wheelock upgrade. It's like you get K and 1 at Dale and the other grades are down there.
Right. So I can't tell you that they had all those discussions. And all, what we talked about is if you were going to change the structure. So we right now have three average-sized buildings in Medfield. Some people think we have little buildings. We do not. I just want to be clear. 400 kids is an average elementary building in Massachusetts. 200 to 300 is small. High fives are 600 is big. And my piece, and I was on the school committee for 15 years, years ago, is that you have to vet it if you're going to really change that structure. You have to talk to parents, is this what you want for your kids' education? Because it's a different type of education. But that has not been vetted. And the idea of the campus piece has been talked about a lot. And there's certainly some reasons for it, and there's some reasons not for it. But that also hasn't been vetted. So though, we've taken our charges to do something about Dale. And we have the school committee members and we've, we've asked them, you know, where do you, where is it you want to go with this? Because it's really a school committee decision with vetting from the community. Um, and they have come around, Bob, would you say I'm clear that it's going to be a, see, thumb up there from Bob. It's going to be two grades. And the idea of a, the campus putting like an upper elementary is not even anything that they have brought forward to discuss.
Like, I know what I'm doing in my head and, and I know why I'm doing it, which is, I just, I'm listening to what you say you're trying to do and I'm just going, yeah, this doesn't feel good and I know why. It's because if there's not, if the building committee can't somehow or another recast this debate in dimensions that are different than the dimensions that drove the last debate, I don't think you'll get out of the rut of the dimensions of the last debate. So what I, what I'm doing in my head is I'm saying, is there a, is there a strategy that gets introduced? My question about criteria had to do with, is there's a way to get people to see the question with a different perspective before you ever ask the question? That's, I know that's what I'm doing now that I'm listening to myself, but I, I, I worry about, not, you know, no slam on any of you. I worry about the ability to orchestrate a discussion that doesn't stay stuck in the rut.
Yeah.
And then I'm looking for some way to redefine the nature of the question so that it forces people to have to, you know, look at it with a 30-degree different perspective than what they were. And that's what I now realize, that's what I'm doing, but that's why I'm doing it.
Gus, on the application, if I'm not mistaken, there's a question asked in the application, are you doing this to remove a building from your school? And the, we bought, we checked that box off, no. So they, so we are telling the MSBA, we're building the school to not eliminate another school.
Right. Well, that, but that's, but that's a MSBA bureaucratic form. I'm talking about the strat, I'm talking about the strategic thinking behind. And again, all I'm trying to do is just change the perspective of the discussion. And I'm looking for a way to do it. That's all it is.
It is, it is a different way to say, instead of short-term, here's a school, it's, what does Medfield really look like in 15 years? And, you know, I moved to Medfield, my family, in 79. I went from a four-year high school in Wackawhampu High School. And I moved here, it was a three-year. And I was like, three-year high school? Who goes for a three-year high school? And then voila, you know, in 2004, we suddenly become a four-year. So you can change numbers and I, you know, I don't think I was affected going from a three to a four. I thought it was weird that there was such a thing as a three-year high school. But, you know, so if we change things down the road, it's just change. Now, I, I'm not going to just swipe that to the side. From an educational standpoint, you already said this, Carol, that, that, Carol, that there's, you do need to be conscious when you start putting grades together and numbers of students together. You change the dynamics from 400 to 600 is a significant dynamic.
It is. It is. So, but I agree, Gus, that it's looking at location. We know it's a big undertaking, but that's what we need to do. We need to start those conversations. And there may not be a new way to look at it. There just may be a more calm, thorough way to look at it. These are the pros and cons. And how much do they matter to how many people? That, that is something that we think needs to be done this time. That people need to have a voice about the pros and cons and how much do they matter, and we find that out.
Better you than me.
Uh, one quick one, then we're going to keep moving because I look to the clock, we are way behind here.
Chris Potts, just, um, just to go back to Gus's point in case this is helpful. I mean, if we're talking about MSBA, MSBA does have in their regulations site standards. And if you look at their site standards, there are at least six points there. Some of the points are actually, they conflict with each other. Some of them are very objective, you know, do you have to put in infrastructure, for example, that's very objective. Other ones are very subjective. And I think that trying to get opinions from people in the community about the subjective points that are in these regulations could actually help a lot. Without saying, do you want this site or this, or that site? I'll give you an example. One of the points is, to the extent feasible, the site selected shall be proximate to other facilities such as libraries, museums, parks, natural resources, nature study areas, and businesses which would enhance the proposed educational program. Now, either site, you could argue, would meet some of these criteria. We don't know if some of these criteria are more important to people than others, for example. So do, a forum could be used to sort of tease out, you know, would you rather have a school close to businesses and libraries and, you know, historic buildings? Or would you rather have a school that has much more access to natural areas? Um, and I think we don't really, we didn't get into that with the last site selection. What they basically did was, was they created the matrix that was used, was the matrix that was used by Westwood. They said it, the, the OPM said, we just took, we just took Ma, uh, Westwood's matrix and we used it. And it turns out it's actually the same matrix, selection matrix that's used in multiple schools. So we never really had a selection process that was customized to Medfield. And I think this, this forum could be used to help sort of, again, tease out the things that people, that people care, what people care about.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Carolyn.
All right. Maurice, she's been so patient back there.
Okay.
All right. So Maurice Corle, Director of Public Works, requests the following. Vote to approve the wastewater treatment plant assessment contract with Woodward and Curran, Inc. for $270,000 funded by ARPA for professional engineering services to assess the building and operations of the facility and recommend upgrades and improvements for future operations and compliance.
So the first two contracts, actually A and B kind of go hand in hand.
Yeah.
As you know, our wastewater treatment plant is antiquated. We have, um, you know, a lot of different compliance issues. We have a lot of different sampling procedures that we have to do, um, as we come further and further every year. So with the wastewater treatment plant, we're looking at an assessment to, to look at all our operations, look at our, our equipment, look at the building, look at our compliance. What needs to be done, what, what improvements we should look for for the future. And hand in hand with the next contract for the INI investigation was just the inflow and infiltration that comes into the sewer system that we don't want in there, that we're trying to reduce as much as we can. We're never going to, no town or city ever gets rid of the inflow and infiltration. It's always a constant battle. But some towns face, um, more excessive, uh, INI than, than others. So with the first one is to, to look at the, the treatment plant, to give an assessment. It's going to be ARPA-funded, which is a fantastic thing for us. Uh, I think it's a much-needed thing to, to look at for, for, as we move into the, you know, into the future.
Pete, any questions?
Yes, a couple. So if, if we had a, an operator for the wastewater treatment plant, instead of hiring Woodward and Curran, Curran to run it for us, isn't that who we use?
Uh, Weston and Sampson.
Weston and Sampson, okay. Would this be the sort of thing that the, the operator would be able to do? Or we'd still have to be up to a consultant?
We still have to get a consultant to do this, yeah. This is above and beyond what the capacity of a chief operator would be.
Okay, all right. So that, there was a reference to operational difficulties experienced during peak flow events.
That has to do with the INI, the influ- infiltration. When it comes in, it's, it's groundwater coming into our system.
Yeah, it sounded like it went from 200 gallons to 700 gallons per something or other.
It's all extra flow that's coming in that we need to treat, that we shouldn't have to pay for to treat.
So you've got to find out where that's coming from, is it?
Correct. And that's the second contract, yeah.
Okay. And I guess this is just sort of a random interest on mine, because I saw that the, that we're, our, our permit is for, um, 1.52 million gallons per day. What are, what are we actually using?
Well, right, it depends on the, on the season. Sometimes we're at 600 to 800,000.
Yeah.
Sometimes we're up over a million. When we have those INI events, like the big heavy rainstorms, we could be up to 2 million, sometimes even, even more.
Okay. And are you, are you going to talk about the, the next one separately or?
Yeah, because we.
Yes.
All right. I'm all set then.
So first of all, my questions are only going to be for the first two contracts. The other two look fine. So where we start here isn't four, four contracts worth of discussions. And most of my questions, I found myself trying to fit the jigsaw puzzle together. I was initially, before I read the INI contract, I was saying, wait, but we're doing a lot of INI work. What, how is this, how does this fit? So I'm actually just trying to understand how they fit. The, um, that was a basic question. In this, in this contract, phase one says develop future flows and load projections. And the, my question was, is that, are those projections going to be driven by projections of new growth and development? Or what's the basis?
No, it's, it's, it's the, it's the inflow and infiltration that's driving this. So the, the, the flows that come in now.
So this is kind of a static, it's not looking at where the town's going to be in 20 years. It's looking at.
It's going to take that into consideration as well.
Is it make, then it will make assumptions about what the INI results will be that'll reduce the flow, I would assume?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Uh, let's see.
It does take in consideration.
In that first one about developing future flows and load projections in the, in the little paragraph right up, updated flows and loads to the treatment plant will be based on unit factors. And I didn't know if unit factors was, well, partly I was thinking it included new growth. And I was saying, is a unit, a housing, what is a unit factor? Is that a housing unit and what that contributes or?
I'm, I'm not sure what they meant by that, but I, they do take in consideration expansion and future development in this.
Okay.
Okay. They, the, the issue is, is INI, is reducing INI, but having to take that into the treatment plant. We have to look at the treatment plant twofold. One, can we reduce the INI? We're never going to get rid of it. But if we can't reduce it to, to, to some extent, we need to make improvements at the treatment plant to be able to take that in if needed.
Okay.
And right now, we don't have that capacity.
So my question around that was, how does this analysis using unit factors, how is it affected by the limits on the town's water usage? You know, what I was getting at is if it's a static factor and you just kind of say, well, we're going to grow X amount. Well, at some point you hit the water limits that we can tap. And so there's this other factor that says, well, you got to figure out how to get people to use less and less water to the extent you go and growth beyond, that would drive us beyond the limits that we have. So I'm just trying to understand.
Capacity is not the, the issue at this point, but we are looking to add capacity to the treatment plant for future development.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's one fold. The second fold is the INI factor. That's, that's what's not consistent. If we can reduce INI, we don't have to make the plant so big that it's oversized.
Yeah, okay.
But because we're never going to be able to get rid of INI altogether, we need to have some sort of capacity to accept some INI so we can be compliant for the future.
Okay, okay. Got that. Then a few contract, a few contract issues.
Okay.
Um, the, first off, there's three deliverables, facility, draft plant, facility plan report, final facility plan report and a presentation. And this is a lump-sum contract. How well-defined is the spec for these deliverables? Like, is it, is it industry practice? So do we? In other words, if I, if I'm, if I'm a contractor and I get a lump-sum contract to deliver a report, and it's, you know, it's a reasonably big contract here, I kind of like that because the report's going to be whatever I want it to be. It's not like a, you know, sell me a tractor or something like that. So I'm just curious how well-defined, when they, when they're doing this on a lump-sum basis, what's the actual spec that they're working against that would tell you whether they've done the job or not?
So we are going, they are going to bill us as they, as they move forward in the process.
Good.
But the reports, I don't have, it's, it's, I mean, most of these engineering firms do a lump-sum contract. They don't have a breakdown of what the report costs, the report costs of all the information that's gathered. So I guess I, I don't have a breakdown of, like periodically of what, what milestones they're going to hit.
So here's, so interestingly, they use the term lump-sum billing method, which it's like.
At the end of the project.
But this is a, what kind of contract is this? This is not a time and materials contract. It's a lump-sum contract.
It's a lump-sum contract.
So there's a difference between, we're going to bill you lump sums by the increment, you know, we do phases. We'll bill you this amount for this phase. That's lump-sum billing. Lump-sum contract says we agree to a fine, with an actual price. And for that price, we're going to do everything. In other words, all the risk is on the contractor's shoulders to get it done efficiently and make a profit. When you have an unspecified output, if I'm a contractor, I would be delighted to have a lump-sum contract for that because it's an unspecified output. That's when you don't want, if it's an unspecified output, that's when you would go time and materials. And I'm trying, I'm just, because they use the term lump-sum billing method, it's like, well, is this a lump-sum contract? I think it is. And that led to my question. So what specifies full, particularly because they say that, well, anything that goes beyond this is a subject for further modifications. And it's like, that's fine, but where's the stake in the ground that says this is how far you have to get before you come to us for more modifications? See, you see what I'm getting? Got that?
Yeah, I mean, in, in our practice, in our, in our experience with these lump-sum contracts, all engineering with professional services will do this. They will bill us on a monthly basis from this period to this period. And that's how this will, will go as well. But it's not, most of them don't specify how much it's going to cost each stage of the report.
And I'm fine with that. I've actually talked about the final price.
Yeah.
When they have, when they have. When they have, when they have consumed $270,000 in cost.
That's all the contract's gonna be for.
Well, no, that's fine, but that would be true of a time and materials contract, too. What I'm asking is, do we know what we're actually getting for that? I know we have this list of a draft plan, a final plan, a presentation. But I could get you, it would be a crappy one, but I could get you a draft plan by next week, based on my knowledge, and a final plan the following week. And then I'll sit down with you with a PowerPoint, because I'm good at PowerPoint, and I'd be delighted to cash that $270,000.
So, how would you, how would you have them reconstruct this then?
My real issue is around the expectations. It may be that you're gonna tell me, well, the industry kind of knows what a facility plan report needs to be. There is an established standard. These guys are good. If they don't give us something that's as good as this thing would nor have to be, I'll never do any more business with them. And it's like, I'm not gonna fight about that. So, the short answer, that's why I asked, is there a spec? What's the clear expectation for these plans?
I don't have a spec for, for that expectation.
Then what is the understanding between you, if, if you don't like what they produce, what does Woodward and Curran do? Do they say, well, fine, we might even lose money on this and we'll do what you want? Or do they say, well, let's talk about an expansion of the scope?
I think, I think with professional engineers, I mean, that's why we're using Woodward and Curran. They're the experts in the field, and we have to trust that they're the ones that, that know what needs to get done for this particular project. I mean, I can't, I can't give you a breakdown of what they're actually, how they're gonna break down the, the price to the 270, but I, I trust that they're gonna give us the 270,000 worth in their report.
Sometime you and I need to grab a beer and talk contracts.
Yeah, absolutely, like after tonight.
Okay, I got that. And then the last question I had, there was clarification of the assumptions. Exclusions from the scope of work and cost presented above include the following. The existing cap, capacity of the WWTP and hydraulic model will be completed prior to or in parallel to the scope of work. And my question was, so it's-
That's with the facility assessment that we have, that we have the, the grant with.
Is that, so that's a, yeah, that's a contract you already have?
Correct.
So, I, I was just confirming. So, they're saying, well, this thing has to be done. I'm going, who's doing it?
They're gonna be doing it in parallel with that.
They're, they're doing that?
Yes.
So, they're doing it, and they're doing that ahead, so they're, so this, this prerequisite is a prerequisite. They're on the hook to produce before they can do this.
Right.
That's it for the first one.
Okay.
You know, the way I look at it, Mo, is, I've been sitting here now for two, going on my third year, and I've seen Woodward and Curran how many times. So, we have a working relationship. And I sense you've never been disappointed in what they've done, and they've, they've, they've been open with you and, and been helpful. But I'll, this is our attorney raises hand, do you?
Yeah, I mean, I've been doing this stuff for about 30 years, and I've done a lot of it since I went to Franklin. There's a certain number of engineering firms, including Woodward and Curran, tie in bond. There's, there's a number of them. And they're, it's a close group, not only the industry, but the profession, the people in Mo's position. And there's expectations, and everybody understands what's expected of them. And the, the last thing they want is a major municipality to terminate them for cause of convenience, because it just has a ripple effect. So, they'll go out of their way, really, to make sure that the, the client is satisfied. In my experience, I've, I've never seen, well, the only, the only dispute I ever saw was third party litigation and who was at fault. That was it.
So, I see our collective responsibility is to make sure that the town's spending its money properly. And I, I hear that. I was prepared to hear that, that, well, we kind of work together, we know each other well enough, and there's an, we have an understanding of how this all works. I'm coming in from a more formal contract management standpoint that says there's certain circumstances where a fixed-price contract goes in, and the risk of that is on the contractor's shoulders. That's what, fixed price gives you the opportunity to make more money, if you do things well. And lose more money if you don't do things well. I read some of this, and it's like, first, just as an outsider, not part of that community, I can't tell the difference between a true, responsible, disciplined, financially disciplined arrangement and a comfortable arrangement where, well, it says fixed price, but if we need more, we just go and get more, and we get more. And I've worked in the federal government and I've seen plenty of that. So, my questions have to do around discipline. I'm, I'll, I'll accept what you're saying, making the point, because usually fixed price is you have a defined scope of work with clear deliverables, and you sign a fixed-price contract. If you can't do that, then you sign a time and materials contract, and they work, and you can decide you don't want to give them any more work. If they don't get the job that you want them to do done in time, then, you know, you just don't hire them for the rest. And so, I'm, I'm just trying to fix in my own mind, I see just three draft plan, final plan presentations, like $270,000. The other one's easier for me to see, because guys are going through sewers and running, you know, I can see the work on that one, less so than this one.
A lot of like, design contracts are the same way as well. I mean, they're, they're not time and materials, they're per, per the job from-
Right, right.
25% design all over the plan specs and estimates.
Right. In fact, the worst ones are time and materials with a cap, which I have a client right now, they have to live with that, because the clients they have have the clout to force that on them, which is the worst of both worlds. If you get it done in less than you thought, it comes to us. If it takes more than you thought, it's on you. And it's, my old grounding in contract management is, I would never accept that, but they wind up, their executives make business decisions about what they're willing to risk, and it's judged, it's based really on how well they think they know that, their client, or the clients of the contractors, is really what boils down to.
In the spirit of-
Yeah.
Because I, I know we've got quite a few, are you ready to read?
I am, I am.
I've got one more point to make, Mo, for, they, they added something in the language of the contract that I think is kind of unfair of them. They say that the, the purpose is to provide professional justification for future capital improvements. That makes it sound like you've already decided to do stuff, and you just need cover for it. So, I think that they didn't do you any favor with that phrase.
What was that, Pete?
Oh, it's somewhere in there, I just-
I saw that too, Pete. I didn't, I didn't assume that we had told them what capital improvements they wanted, so it was back to-
Yeah, but it makes it sound like that, it's-
Although I think anybody taking a trip to the wastewater treatment plant would agree that there are capital improvements that are very necessary. Yes.
Okay.
I'm impressed that we run it.
Question from the audience?
Jeff Hyman, just a quick question. Are we not required to get to solicit bids for projects like this? I mean, 500, roughly 500,000 is a lot of money. And I've done, you have partners in crime, but are we not required to, to look at the other experts and glean information?
We've done that.
So, you do, you do-
We had an RFQ.
So, you did that, oh, good. All right, thank you. And the other thing is, I, I think, I just want to echo Gus. You do have, they are going to provide you with things. You do have a deliverable.
Right.
And then it's going to drive what's going to go next. So, that just needs to be super clear, so that you need a deliverable. That's a lot of money. I, I didn't really understand, Gus, your question with the bill, I mean, they're gonna bill you?
Their term is, it's a lump sum billing method. And it's like, no, it's a lump sum contract. How you choose to bill is a separate thing. You wanna bill lump sum by phase, that's fine.
Right. But in the proposal, it should be outlined, we're going to do this, then we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna provide you with this. I'm assuming that is in there. It's the plan.
It's in the scope of ours.
So, you have a scope?
Yes.
So, thank you.
Ready?
Ready.
I move that we approve the wastewater treatment plant assessment contract with Woodward and Curran for $270,000 funded by ARPA for professional engineering services to assess the building and operations of the facility and recommend upgrades and improvements for future operations and compliance.
I'll second the performance of April 16th, 2024, to April 30th, 2025. I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Against? Good. All right, moving on to number two. Vote to approve the sanitary sewer evaluation contract with Woodward and Curran, Inc., for $220,000 funded by ARPA for professional engineering services to investigate and evaluate areas of the town which inflow and infiltration has been identified in the sewer collection system, which I know you just referenced.
So, so we found, we found a, a very big area when we had the, the extreme amount of rains, not this last set of rains, but the rains before that. Water was coming, flying through, clean groundwater coming into our sewer system. So, there are major leaks in the area of the, of the Blake Middle School, High School, Philip Street area. And that's where we may find possibly half of what inflow and infiltration is coming into our system. If we can stop that, that's gonna be a huge, huge advantage to the town for future. So, that's what's really important about this. Again, ARPA funding, it would be approved by, by the county for ARPA funding. And this is broken down a little bit better than-
Yes, it was.
The other one.
Pete?
No, I'm fine with this one.
But again, most of my questions have to do with just understanding, not contract management. They're just, so, in the first paragraph says, if it lasts sentence, GIS will need to be updated to assume this work be completed through the town CY 2024 Asset Management Grant through the Massachusetts DEP SRF program. Who's doing that work?
Woodward and Curran, that's the one we just, the contract.
That's Woodward, okay.
Woodward and Curran does most of all of our sewer-related systems.
It's just weird when they're assuming work they're doing is gonna get done before the, but it's the right thing for them to do.
Yep.
It's just weird. In task one, Medfield Middle School Investigation, as I read it, is this, the way it was, you know, it's, I think it's looking to determine where it's coming from, but the focus on the schools, is this likely to be something that the schools are pumping stuff into the?
No. This is, this is a break in their system, that groundwater is entering into the system.
Okay.
So, some of this, some of this project is gonna find issues at the school that the school would have to address.
Okay.
If it's on school property.
Correct.
It is. It's, at the time that originally, before you flipped the schools, when they did a rehab, right before I became Town Council, there's underground streams and everything else up there, huge amount of water.
So, that was actually the only question I had on this. But the one thing I was trying to understand which led to that question is, there was, in some of these tasks, there was looking for, it was checking for sump pumps from private residents, which were sump pumps that actually had hoses going down the driveway, which you often see. But then I thought, and maybe I've just read it wrong, I thought there were other instances where somebody had attached a sump pump outlet, which sounded like it was right into the sewer system.
Correct.
So, we do have those, and those are sort of legacy.
Those are difficult to, to identify. The CCTV may be able to identify some.
Yep.
But it's very difficult to find that. So, if we find that this area is bringing in, say, 750 gallons per minute, and we can only treat, we can only find, say, 150, and we, we fix the, the leaks and everything else, we have to assume that a lot of this other is indirectly connected to our sewer illegally.
Yeah, that's, that was what I was trying to get calibrated on, is how much of this, it may not even been legal, I guess, when they did it, if it goes back far enough.
So, our issue is that if, if people are connected to the sewer, sometimes they build new houses, they connect directly into our sewer. We would rather see them have the hose outside go into the, because we know they're not hooked into the sewer. With it being hooked into the sewer, if that's one of our major issues, if that we find that it's not in leaks, it's mostly in sump pump connections, then we have to make a decision as a town to say, do you give them an amnesty, give them a way out to say, hey, I'm connected, I need to change that within a certain amount of time? Or does the town pay for that? Or does the town have to investigate everybody's sewer system, and we go into their houses to find if they have illicit discharging, you know, into the illegal connection to the sewer? So, that's one of the things a lot of cities and towns fight against, because, you know, you, you want to give everybody the benefit of the doubt, but you're also creating a problem where the townspeople are paying more money than they should to treat water that they shouldn't even have in there.
So, is it, would it be, I mean, if it comes to that, I say there's a lot of sump pump connections, is there any reason why the town just could say, you're not allowed to do that, fix it?
But first, you have to identify where they are.
Find it, that's the key, you gotta find it, okay.
I think the town has said that they're, that's not allowed, haven't they?
No, it's not allowed, but, but there's no bylaw that states that we can go and enter their property to, to find that.
Right.
We can go in their property to change the meter and things like that for water.
Enforcement's challenging.
Yeah.
Can't just put a plug on the pipe.
Well, the problem is, at the point where sewer was being extended, and there was a lot of development going on, and you didn't have people and staff to do the necessary inspections, and some contractor said, oh, you got a sump pump problem, we're putting sewer in, I'll-
Get rid of the problem right away for them, but it creates a problem on the other side.
They might actually even have a sump pump exhausting into the sewer in their basement.
Exactly.
So, it's not a matter of putting it out somewhere, it could be-
That's exactly what you said. And then we also have illegal connections to our drainage system, which is not the sewer, it's the drains that go into our waterways. And that's illicit discharges from our stormwater management. So, we're fighting kind of two, two evils here.
Although that, that, I don't know what you have, although you did model off to Franklin, but we actually, because there was so much development on small lots in Franklin, we actually gave people the ability, as long as it's clean water, to put that into the stormwater system.
Yeah, we were in, we put a dry well at the bottom of our driveway, and at the time, we were told, you had to get town approved, but we could have run a pipe from the dry well at the bottom of the driveway to the, the, basically the, the drain, the wastewater, not wastewater, stormwater system over on K-Mark. It would've cost some money to run the pipe, and I would've done it, but it was going through a neighbor's yard, and they would've also benefited in those.
We try not to make those connections directly into our system, only because we don't know what's in their basement. We don't know what's, what's coming in. And we're responsible for monitoring all that stormwater management at the, at the outfalls. What we try to do is, is if they have no other option, is to work with them. It may be going into a, a stormwater, like a stone pit getting filtered before it, and then trickles into our, into our drain, which cleans it out for us, so.
Frank and I both had failed sump pumps this last month, so you're making us really nervous with all this sump pump conversation, and we need to go home and check them. So, just saying.
Okay. Yes. Ready?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move that we approve the sanitary sewer evaluation contract with Woodward and Curran, Inc., for $220,000 funded by ARPA for professional engineering services to investigate and evaluate areas of the town in which inflow and infiltration has been identified in the sewer collection system.
Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Vote to approve the Verizon consent form to allow for the addition of three antennas to the Medfield State Hospital water storage tank. ZZW only has a total of six now, and was originally granted 12.
Yep. So, in their, in their lease, Verizon Wireless on the Medfield Hospital tank has up to 12 antennas they're allowed to put up there. They only have six right now. They're looking to put in additional three without putting anything new onto the, onto the tank, no new anchors or anything like that. So, they're only gonna add three additional ones for making it nine altogether. So, this is a consent for them to, to be able to do that.
There's no money in this for us?
They give us money per year now.
Yeah, they were, we're, they're paying for 12.
They already give us, but they're not giving us anymore.
No.
Paying for 12 now.
Shucks.
Because we, because you guys agreed to let them do this before.
That must've been six years ago, just saying. Any questions?
Dark questions.
All right.
I move that we approve the Verizon consent form to allow for the addition of three antennas to the Medfield State Hospital water storage tank.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right. Vote to approve the recommended complete street project so the town can move ahead and apply for funding with Beta Group Engineers submitting the application on behalf of the town.
Got a little, just a little presentation, really quick, not too many slides. I'll be, I'll be quick on it.
Okay.
We started a Complete Streets program, and Complete Streets basically tells us that it provides safe and accessible options for all travel, multimodal transportation, such as pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicle usage, and freight through the town. So, we try to create roads that, that depict that kind of understanding when we build these roads. So, you can go to the third slide, please. There's three tiers in a Complete Streets program. One is development of a policy. We have done that. You have approved a Complete Streets policy for the town. Tier two would be a prioritization plan to show, with a consultant, show different areas of town that have gap, gaps that are needed to be filled, some constructions of new sidewalks, handicapped accessibility, compliance, all those things fit into the prioritization plan. Tier three would be actually going out and construct some of these projects and get funding from the Complete Streets program. They allow up to $500,000 per round, okay? Each round is four years. So, we only, if we get up to $500,000, you would not be eligible for another four years to get more money from them. So, what we're trying to do is find projects that are- So, what we're trying to do is find projects that are, we feel that are necessary, that are up to the $500,000, so we can get the most, the maximum out of that. And, so if you go to the next one, please, we'll skip that one, go to the, so one of the projects we're looking at is the Charles Dale area. The whole Charles Dale subdivision, all the way to Marsh Road, and all those areas, they have no access to the center of town. I would like to say that prioritization plan is in conjunction with the self-evaluation plan and ADA compliance that we had done prior to, that showed different areas of the town where we should be focusing on. So, the heat map shows anywhere around the center of town, schools, parks, playgrounds, those kind of areas that are, should be looked at first before going to different areas. So, this area here would connect from Charles Dale Road to Grove Street on Dale Street, a crosswalk across the street to the cemetery, a little sidewalk to get to the cemetery entrance. That would connect that whole subdivision area to be able to get to the schools, and eventually the center of town, the FAF Center, Public Safety Building, and so forth. The next one that we, I just want to let you know that this was a collaboration between the consultant who picked these projects that they felt being, you know, non-biased, looking at the town as a whole, to see where we should be focusing on. Frank, myself, Bobby Kennedy, Highway Supervisor, kind of worked with a consultant to kind of, kind of look at these projects to figure out where we, you know, especially with Bobby being here for forever and ever, really, really helped out. It was really a good resource. This one here is the Flintlock on Pine Street, from Flintlock to Winter Street, to make that connection in conjunction with the next slide, which would be the Winter Street, from that point, Winter Street out to North Street, which would connect to another major sidewalk, that again, would bring them to the FAF Center, to the Public Safety Building, the schools, and an access to the center of town, which would take a huge area of, of a connection. The next one, the third project, Adam Street. So, this one here, we are, there's a couple different areas, sidewalks, that we were looking at. One was the Harding Street area, one was the Adam Street area. The Adam Street area to, all the way to the rail trail. This one here would be a phase of that. It would be from Memorial School to West Street from this point, to fit into the $500,000 cap, which we would then continue on with funding, whether it's Chapter 90, whether it's town-funded, we're looking into capital for sidewalk work, that we would continue that. With that being said, we've done roadwork from West Street to, we're looking at doing West Mill Street this year, as well as Harding Street from the hospital road over to West Street, and that would button up that whole area, except for the hospital area, which we're waiting to see what transpires from the hospital project. We don't want to do too much near the hospital with all that construction going on.
Right.
Same thing if the Dale Street School, or whatever school, you know, is decided on in the next few years. We don't want to put too much work into the infrastructure and have it destroyed by construction, so we're trying to think about that, being proactive. With those three projects, the total cost would be $542,000. $500,000 we are eligible for, doesn't mean we're going to get it, but being the first time Complete Streets community, we should be able to get pretty close to the $500,000. The $42,000, we feel, because there's contingencies in this, there's, the contingency, I don't believe we're going to use all of it, but we have to have it in there just in case, but I think it's going to come out to right around $500,000 for those three particular projects.
That's great.
So, you're saying three projects, but I see four.
The Winter Street with the connection on Pine Street would be one project.
Yep. Oh, I see, all right, so you're combining those two?
Yes.
All right. So, let me ask you about that Pine Street one. What does that gain us? I mean, is there, is there sidewalks on Flintlock?
Yes, there is. On that whole subdivision, they'll be able to access either way. They can go out to Green Street, which is a long way to go out that way to come to the center of town, but it'll also make a connection to the schools, the, you know, the Dale Street School complex, the FAF Center, as well as getting to the center of town and-
Well, and you're trying to get to Winter, and you're trying to get out to North, I guess, is what you're doing. So, that makes sense to me. So, that, when I saw the Winter one, and I just saw this today, that my reaction was, gee, I'm not sure that I would have done Winter. I might have done Pine instead, because people would be more likely, because most people that are coming down out of that area are headed towards the downtown.
Pine is another, another extension we're looking for, for the future. We have, in part of the Complete Streets-
Why did you choose Winter over Pine for this one going first?
Because the Pine Street intersection at North has to be reconstructed.
It'd be more expensive.
It would be, well, we would put a sidewalk on where we may, in the next few years, next five years, rip that sidewalk out because-
Oh, because you're redoing Pine Street.
We're going to be doing that intersection at North Street.
Oh, okay.
We want to be able to, there's a big radius on Pine Street where people are apt to fly around the corner there and not use it as a right-hand turn. It's more of a, just like the Dale Street-
Which would be made into a T-intersection.
We want to tee it off, we want to get rid of the pole, we want to narrow it up, and by putting that, especially with Pine Street being such a narrow roadway, we're not sure if we would have to take land to get these sidewalks in, or narrow the road too much, so we have to look into that a little bit more before we make a decision.
So, it's having to redo that, that end section of the sidewalk at Pine is why you chose to go Winter instead of-
There's no layout for that.
Right.
There's what, Mark?
It's so old, there's no layout, so you've got to pave the area, but to expand that, as Mo alluded to, you're looking at possible land acquisitions. There's also wetland issues, I believe.
So, so the easiest way to get that area out to the, to North Street, where they can access different areas, is to put it on Winter Street at this point, but we're not discounting Pine Street. We're just not recommending that for this particular round.
My fear is that you're going to build the sidewalk out to Winter, and no one's going to use it. They're just going to continue going down Pine Street to North, because it's close, it's the fastest way, so, but. On your Adam Street one, did you compare the cost of doing, it's $190,000, I see. Did you compare, I like the Harding Street sidewalk better than this one, but I assume that's a lot more expensive.
So, we're looking at Harding Street for the future, after the Adam Street one. Because of the Medfield State Hospital still, still not developed, we didn't want to put a sidewalk in. We felt that the Adam Street sidewalk took a lot more residential homes and connected, want to connect both sides. We want to connect the Harding Street to the rail trail, as well as we want to connect the Adam Street from the schools to that area. So, we're looking at both options. We felt that the Adam Street was a better option at this time, and that we would look in the near future to do the Harding Street one as well.
So, as someone who bikes up and down Harding and Adams a lot,
Yep.
I feel totally safe on Adams. I mean, it's, there's so little traffic on that, that there's much less need for a sidewalk there than on Harding, so I would just add that as a consideration for you. As I say, I would, I would prefer to see it on Harding than on-
Like I said, we were waiting to see what the State Hospital project would develop into, and what mitigation came from that.
There's nothing at the State Hospital that's going to change what's happening on Harding, other than those intersections that we're going to change, and we're going to change those before the State Hospital gets done, so I'm not quite sure why that's a weight.
Well, like I said, it's the construction of that sidewalk we would be considering once, once the construction of the State Hospital is further along. That was, that was, that was the thought process with ourselves and the consultant when we-
The issue is bringing the infrastructure up to the State Hospital in terms of the roadway, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, the roadways are, the intersections are going to get done before the State Hospital project.
That's going to change the sidewalk as well.
Right.
So, we don't want to do any construction on the Harding Street area until we, until that's, that was-
No, I wouldn't do that, but I would, I would do the, you know, we've got the $5 million or whatever it is to redo the intersections. I would redo the intersections, then I'd do the sidewalk on Harding over the one on Adams. That would just, my pick, but you and Frank and Bobby apparently picked this one.
This is the conversation we had with the consultant, but if you feel strongly that that should change, I mean-
I'll make a counterargument that it should not. The Adam Street is a sidewalk that kids walking to Memorial School need. I don't know that Chief Kingsbury is listening, but if he was, I've had several conversations with him over the years, and I, I think I can honestly say that of all the conversations I've had with people here in town about things that they'd want to see, since I've been on the Board of Selectmen, the one conversation I feel like I've done the least to actually respond to, that deserved response, was that one around sidewalks on Adam Street. The reason I have never raised it is because it's like I'm sympathetic to the dilemma you've had. Everybody wants more sidewalks, and I gather he's probably voiced his views about, he's not using them. He's concerned about the little kids that he sees walking to school on that, on Adam Street with no sidewalk. So, for that reason, I would argue against that for Adam Street. Living on Harding Street, it would be great to have sidewalk, but I think the part we're talking about itself to me anyway would do me any good getting over to the barn, but it's going to-
But we definitely want to take in consideration both Harding and Adam Street in that area, as well as other sidewalks around town that connect to the heat map that we have for our self-evaluation, that again, that goes to the center of town, goes to playgrounds, parks, and schools. We're trying to make those connections and get as many people as we can through those areas. And this is the only, it's only a little bit of money. $500,000 goes pretty quickly when you're talking about sidewalks, so.
I was impressed at how much you could get done for half a million, so.
And that's, and that's why we tried to maximize what we could get eligible. If we don't, if we don't get the full $500,000, and we have to kind of look at the projects and say, you know, do we, which ones do we kind of go through?
So, when I saw that this was on our agenda, I went looking for this document, this Complete Streets prioritization.
Yep.
That I guess was done in March of last year. I don't think I had seen this, Mo, because this is the type of stuff that I eat up. I love seeing these little, I mean, they're nice pictures, and it's sidewalks. I mean, that's, I love to talk about sidewalks. And so, on this version, there's that connection problem at the, along West Mill Street, where the Adams Street comes down, and you need to get over to Ice House Road, basically.
So, we're redoing that intersection this year. We're going to redo the intersection, and I know the sidewalk you're talking about to connect to the Ice House Road.
And the problem I see is that bridge is just so narrow. So, what I was going to suggest to you is that there's that railroad right-of-way. It's basically the right-of-way for the rail trail, and there's a bridge off in the woods that probably is, you know, may still be good, at least for pedestrian use.
We can look at that.
And you might consider, look into whether the MBTA would give us access to that, to put the sidewalk out into the woods there, instead of right along West Mill.
We do have a cost for that section. It'd be about $400,000 to get it from Adam Street to Ice House Road over that bridge. There would be a pedestrian walkway over that culvert.
Oh, it'd go out and around to the side of the bridge, you mean?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's pricey, huh?
It'd be about $200,000 to $300,000, $250,000.
Well, you know, maybe just ask your engineer what it would cost to go over the right-of-way. It might be a lot less, so. And I bet the MBTA would, would give it to us. They seem very-
We can look into that when we get to that point, for sure.
Yeah, okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
I had one dumb question.
There's no such thing as a dumb question.
Yeah, I don't know. You don't know what I'm capable of. I'm trying to connect, Sarah, we had the study downtown, where you talked about some of the traffic calming, and I realize that's a different initiative, but in my head, I'm trying to say, when I looked at all this stuff, I was partly expecting almost to see, some of this stuff is just like painting, you know, you just paint things out so it squeezes, and I'm just, like, my dumb question is, how, if at all, I don't even know where that stuff is going, but I'm guessing it's not connected to this, but is it connected in our minds or in our master plan?
There is a shared street, shared street grant that's available. We've, I've been working with Maria with flex posts, signs, to make some traffic calming within the center of town. So, we have all that in the works. We're trying to find a contractor for the flex post at this time.
That is part of shared streets, then, it wasn't?
Yes, it wasn't, it's not part of this, not Complete Streets, but Shared Streets.
Ah.
Different, different program altogether.
That's why it's so fuzzed up in my head, okay.
Well, how about the wayfinding? Is that still coming?
That's coming.
That's all part of it.
Yep. There's this little thing called the MBTA Communities, which has derailed all of our other initiatives.
All right.
I only have so much of Maria to go around.
Well, I just want to comment before I go, that I do appreciate this. I actually, I love the roads you've selected here. To your point, we talk about the kids and keeping them safe. Anything we can do around our schools, especially right there at the Memorial deal, that, because so many kids ride their bikes, so, and there's a lot of cut-throughs in the morning, so I love that that's it. And I happen to see the Winter one, ironically, because I got a sidewalk in front of my house a couple summers ago, the number of people now that tend to, you know, Jeff, you can comment on this, and Lisa, you can comment on this, so many more people tend to walk, right, because they feel safer? And I see a lot of people coming from the Flintlock neighborhoods, and they're bobbing and weaving, and know that they can use Winter, and then make that loop around to come back into town to get to the schools. I think it's fantastic.
We're not discounting Pine Street either.
Right, no, I get that.
But there's only so much money that can go around for this first round.
And those are the ones, though, that the town will see that we're, you know, where we're spending the money, because those are very obvious when you're looking at bringing kids to the FAF Center, bringing kids downtown, so. But I see a hand up in the audience. Bill?
Just, just a question. So, I understand the complications that the hospital project is going, going to make for, as far as hospital road goes and everything else. Is there any plan, long-term, for connecting across the front of the green, you know, in front of the cottage area, going from one driveway to the other driveway, you know, from Service Drive down to the cottage area?
I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, because you've got a sidewalk now that comes up from the Larkin Development, and it stops basically at the first closed gate by the cottage area.
Okay.
All right, then you have the whole bear area across the front of the green that goes up to Service Drive. And my question is, is there ever been any thought given to a sidewalk along-
There are, there are a lot of thoughts about a lot of those sidewalks that are the missing connections, and that's where we're trying to grab any and all grant money that's available. We just applied for a million-dollar federal earmark for the gap that's on 109 to connect us down to Shaw's. So, all of those are on the list. It's the funding that's, that's an issue. The Capital Budget Committee will come to the Select Board over the summer and talk about how we're going to think about sidewalks from a funding mechanism long-term, so.
Bill, is there, why do you see a need, unless I'm not understanding what you're talking about? So, you get to the, you're saying in between the Stone Gate and the Service Road entrance?
Yes.
Under the maple trees.
That's all a lot of open green space. That's hardly a hard place for people to walk.
Well, it is now, but let me, the issue is the easement across the center of the core campus.
Yep.
And right now, you have the equestrian access coming right through Gene's area, the Bell Forge area, starting from the field, from Parcel A1 on the, on the right-hand side, and coming right through the middle of the campus and everything else. In our land disposition agreement, when we purchased the property, the requirement was to have a connection between Parcell's A1 and Parcell's A2, and we are allowed, under the land disposition agreement, to have that easement at the front of the property, as opposed to coming through the center of the campus. Now, when I met with the construction manager from Trinity, he was somewhat surprised to learn that there was this access coming through the core of the campus. So, I mean, I'm calling out-
He, Dan's just not as versed in the LDA and all the agreements that we have, so.
But my, my comment is, is that you have the right to put, to have an access at the front of the property. It could be as simple as a gravel path that goes across just off the road surface, or a sidewalk at some point, and if you ever develop the areas of the green, people will be using, can use that.
I definitely think there's going to be access from the State Hospital property all the way to the center of town. That's, that's the goal when you put in that many, many developments in there. So, whatever Trinity, whenever Trinity is done with the development, whatever gaps are missing, that's what we're trying to, to take care of. So, that will be considered for future connections for sidewalks, for sure.
I just mentioned because it may come again when Trinity finishes their, their final plans.
Yeah, I'm either not understanding the problem, but that's not, that's hardly a priority, relative to all the other places we could use sidewalks.
I'm not giving it a priority. I'm asking about the future, you know, you've got thirty months.
Well, the only thing I'll chime in there, Bill, is there's also 12 acres of land that we're looking at, and we don't know what we're going to do for certain. So, if we were to get a developer to put something in up there, we could easily talk about, now we're, we're going to have people wanting to go-
Of course, that'd be across the street.
Yeah, but, but, you know, when you're negotiating, can you do the following so people can walk over? So, I think there are a lot of options forward as we continue to develop that.
I just wanted to see if there's any current, current thought. Thank you.
All right.
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
I move that we approve the recommended Complete Streets projects, Complete Street, Streets Project. I move that we approve the recommended complete streets projects, complete street, streets project. So the town can move ahead and apply for funding with Beta Group Engineers submitting the application on behalf of the town.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mo.
It was a very long night for you.
No, no.
He's, he's been out of practice. He hasn't been here in a while.
Well, we'll ask for some.
I can make that happen. All right, number five. Rick thinks to present a plan and timeline for a sign to be placed in the downtown park with the gazebo.
All right, Rick, we won't quiz you on any of the stuff we just happened to.
Hi there. Good. Succeed that, that performance. That was great. That was good entertainment, but I'm here to talk about your dead plants up on the windows. Are we gonna water those? I don't know.
As soon as we get MBTA passed, we will take care of all of the things that we have been ignoring. I promise.
I just don't know who's paying for those dead plants, but I hope it's not the taxpayer.
Nope, they came from a grant. Not kidding, all this grant.
It's cheaper when you don't have to water them anymore.
That's right, that's right. Keep the grants coming though. All right, so the, the park naming contest that we had with the school students last year, we had a name. If you don't know, just for transparency, it was, it's gonna be revealed, right, at the ceremony in the spring. So it's been approved by the town, slum board. Moving forward, I've worked with the sign company, the sign chair, the sign, what do you call it? The, um.
Committee.
Sign committee chair and also a designer. So we're kind of putting all those pieces together. By the way, the bylaws to get a sign made in town is pretty, pretty extensive. I didn't know that there's so much involved to make it a sign, but we have worked it out to something like maybe a three-by-six sign PVC. It'll look really nice. It'll be privately funded, you know, we'll just bang it out and put it up. But I have three proposed sites for it and I've, I've shown that to the sign committee and I wanted to present that to you. I sent you a slide. I don't know if you have that available. I emailed it. I don't know.
Never got it.
I sent it to you, yes, today.
You sent it to, oh, today, today?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I don't know if I got it.
But at any rate, what I do is I, the sign committee is going to approve the location for the sign and the, the, the sign, I guess aesthetics, right? But then ultimately you guys would sign off on, on the location. So that's what I'm trying to accomplish here. So basically, the first location would be kind of perpendicular across the little pathway in the front from the library sign. That's a nice prominent spot that would be, be seen. But, you know, maybe if we don't want to compete too much with the Medfield sign, have too much signage there, we could push it back a little bit, right before the gazebo where it splits off to the left, there's a nice little piece of grass there. And thirdly, if we wanted to do something like, maybe be a little more subtle, you know, we could just possibly put something smaller up on the gazebo itself. So those were three proposals. The designer that I'm working with is coming up with something very, very simple and clean, you know? But I obviously will show that to you when I have it.
So I have it, but it came in at six twenty-nine, so we're already half an hour into this meeting, so that's why I didn't know about it.
Oh, yeah.
But, uh, I can at least.
Who owns the gazebo? Who's that managed by?
Uh, that would be the slum board.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the park that's being renamed.
The way things are built, I never know down the road who.
Board of Selectmen's Park, so.
That's what it's gonna be called? Just kidding. Actually, like, uh, number two, I think put it in the gazebo. Because it's been called gazebo park, right? So now we're actually gonna have a name for it.
When did you guys vote on this?
We didn't vote on it yet.
It was the committee, no, the committee, we didn't, it was the committee that did it. We accepted their recommendation.
Yeah, we voted about a year or so ago to hold that, that like Richard DeSorga, the town moderator, Ann Thompson.
Ann Thompson and the teen librarian Erica Cody.
So they, they brought a name forward, they decided it, I don't think, I don't think I know what it is.
We didn't decide it. The elementary school students at Dale and Wheelock.
Well, they, they put the name up for, for, uh.
Yeah, they, they gave us a series of names. We had seventy-eight different names, a lot of repetitions. But as a committee, we chose the best four, for things relative to, you know, historical reference, just something that's relative to community, maybe gives a hint that, yeah, kids came up with this one. And then we put those four selections on a ballot. And then I went to the schools and during the lunch period showed the kids the whole civic process of, of an election and how to go through it. And councillor here says, we have to call it a contest, but all intents and purposes, we ran them, walked them through an actual election day process where they would check in, you know, they'd have their name on a registry and then they would be given a ballot and go into a box that was generously donated by the town. So they really got that experience. So that's how the.
So the, the name that you're proposing is the one that was selected by the kids?
Yes.
Okay.
But did that then go in front of Richard and Ann and?
Oh, yeah, yep, yep.
So I want to make sure.
Yeah, it was, it was approved by, well, it was, we were the ones that came up with the four names and said, any four of these are good with us. Let's make sure the slum board is cool with it. You guys were said, cool with us. Even, also we included the, the principals of the schools too, so.
We, we never saw the names.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, we did, we did. We did.
No, we didn't. I didn't see it.
I think I know what it is now that you say that.
Yeah, you, you did see this, you did see them.
The names that were the four candidate names were vetted by the committee.
Yes.
They came to us. We didn't have any objections to the names.
I never saw them.
We'll have to go back and look for it, but at any rate.
So what, I mean, what are we doing here? Are we going to contest like the results of kids' votes or are we gonna move forward?
It's a little, Rick is, this got in a little late, so it's not, if anybody's really interested in looking at what they are, there's the pictures. You can come on up and look at it if you want. The only one I didn't understand is the third one, which has an arrow pointing to the roof of the gazebo.
Yeah, like right, right, right on the ridge.
You'd put it on.
If you maybe put something like, I don't know, a foot by three feet that just said the name, that would be.
The bigger, the bigger question I had when you said it was PVC sign, does that mean it's like white plastic or?
Yeah, you see them, you see them all around. In fact, you know the sign?
One of them.
Be Charmed, for example, out, out front. The, the Signorama actually built that one. That's something I was looking at. It's, it's like, I forget what they call it. It's like post and sign or something, but simple concept. Goes up, sign goes in the middle. You know, if I get more funding, I would get granite posts, but.
Jean, what are we, the pocket park? I mean, I have to go look at these things now because it's like, I can't picture them in my book. The sign for the pocket part is.
Bad example because it's recently failed.
No, it's granite post, but it's on, I think it's on metal.
It's on metal, okay.
It's a very high-quality sign, but for some reason, the surface of it recently failed.
We're gonna fix that with wayfinding money.
Um, Jeff Hyman.
Sure.
I'm, I've been on the sign advisory board for about thirty years. Couple things. I know we have a meeting on Thursday. I don't know. Are you coming to the meeting? Are you presenting anything?
I can, sure, I mean.
I mean, I'm not, if you're not scheduled, then you're not.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, I've just been.
Because I'm not familiar with this at all. It sounds like conversations have taken place, but this is a, are we talking about a permanent sign?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yep, so it does come before us because it doesn't matter where it is. It's a permanent sign. So we're happy to look at that. We do have a bylaw, I think. Do you have a copy of the bylaw? So you know the requirements and we don't really talk, we're not there for aesthetics, but more to support the, you know, the way the town sees the bylaw and what's, you know, what's allowed.
Yep.
So we certainly are happy to, to look at that and, you know, talk to you about it.
Can I just be clear? So you've already had conversation with the sign committee, but sign committee hasn't approved the sign?
We have not, I'm not familiar with this unless I wasn't at the meeting, wasn't familiar.
This is all, this is all just in progress right now.
Okay, so you haven't talked to the committee yet?
I talked to the chair.
Talked to the chair, okay.
Just preliminary. I'm just doing my due diligence. Like, what am I gonna come to this meeting with? Well, I'm gonna come with some proposed spots for it and I'm, I'm gonna come and I'm gonna say, I've got the funding taken care of, I've got the designer ready to go. He has a comprehensive understanding of all the bylaws and everything. And then just let you know, maybe I'll get on the next ballot to talk about the actual event. You know, because I don't know when, what day that would be, but it would be late May, early June.
So our, the only issue for us here is just what we think about the location of the sign. The actual sign would have to be approved by the sign committee.
Yep.
I guess we could weigh in aesthetically if we knew what it looked like, but.
Could we suggest that, that you go to the sign committee first and that they recommend back to us? Do you have time to do that?
It might be though, that if, one of the options is to put it on the roof of the gazebo, that's a different sign than either of the other two that would be on the ground, so.
Of the three, I had, I had one recommended spot. Like, we would like to ideally have it here, but those two other alternative ones, I mean, I've.
Oh, is it your, okay, so that's the first recommendation?
Yeah, I, I just surveyed the area, took some photographs.
So the issue, how far, how far forward does, does the Board of Selectmen Park or whatever it's really called right now, does it go all the way out to the road, do you know, Christine? So they actually does, the beginning of the park is truly on the road, which would be A, as opposed to just a little in front of the gazebo near the flagpole, which would be B.
And, and your first preference is A?
Yeah, yep.
So if there's enough time, I, I would think that it would make sense to have the sign committee weigh in on it and give us a recommendation because they're the ones that are really charged by the town with.
You're not gonna weigh in on aesthetics, you're gonna weigh in on bylaw compliance, so.
Yep.
You, you apply through the building department.
Yep.
And the building department alerts us and then you get on the schedule and then we review it.
Okay, so there's a process. So when is, what is my next step as far? I, I, I was hoping that just after this meeting and I'm like, I got these parts moving and answer all the questions. I was, and everything's already kind of pre-approved and just pending a, a looksee. I was hoping that maybe through email, we could just say, here's the spot, what do you think? I agree. Then over to you guys, you say, well, they like it, we like it, and then.
They're not gonna weigh in, but you're not gonna weigh in on the spot. We're gonna weigh in on the spot.
Yeah.
They're gonna weigh in on compliance with the sign.
If we had got this yesterday, I, I, in fairness to you, I would have walked it because I live not that far from it.
Yeah.
I, I would like to walk this to then kind of visualize like, because what I don't want to see is that you don't see the sign, right? I mean, to me, that's why the gazebo immediately jumped out to me because people there all year round. It's not just when the grass is green.
Yeah.
So if we get snow, if it, you're, you're gonna not know, but if the gazebo is always elevated, that was my first gut.
That's a good idea.
But I see where you have the arrow for your first recommendation. I'm like, oh, let me go check that out and, you know, make sure it is something that jumps out and doesn't get lost in the bike rack and the, you know, going into the Zulo Gallery and all the stuff there, so.
Those are all.
The issue I see with the first one, and you can't tell from the picture, but there's a Medfield Public Library sign on the right-hand side of that walk.
They would flank them, they would flank them, you know, like, it would almost be sort of, yeah. I mean, they wouldn't be balanced because the Medfield Library sign is a ten thousand dollar sign.
So it's actually the biggest aesthetic is like with those two, you see one sign and then a totally different little sign. I'm not sure that's, I'm kind of, as you're talking, I'm leaning more saying the place that people would perceive to be that I'm in the park would probably on, at the gazebo.
On the gazebo.
I can actually see, but I, I like, I lean, I guess I'd like to walk it, I mean.
Sure.
Get those, but.
It'd be a nice subtle thing, just hung from a six-inch chain or something nice that says the name on it, right?
Especially because everyone enters that.
That's my, that's sort of where I visualize it, but I'd, I'd like to go and take a look too.
Yeah, sure. I had no, of the three, those are just a proposal. Do with it what you want, I mean.
So just answer the question. There is a process. You have to apply to the building department. You can do that tomorrow.
Yeah.
You know, and they'll decide whether or not it's something we can look at, which is Thursday, but we meet monthly, so.
So town meeting granted authority to work out a pavilion with the Zulo Gallery that was never actually constructed, but the author, the authorization is still there on the record. So there was some sort of a covered entrance from the side, from the street to the, to the Zulo, so just so you should be aware of that.
It would be headed towards the street, like it would go along the side of the building?
I think.
But we can pull the plot plan for you because you can see where the Zulo property is versus the town. We can pull that before you do your walkthrough.
Okay.
No, this is great.
Yeah. Those are good points. I mean, if, if this does come to fruition, option A would probably be a little too busy, I think, in that area. A lot of crammed in stuff, so, yeah, those are just some ideas. All I'm trying to do is just move the needle, like keep it moving. Come up with some ideas and if you like it, you know, cool, I'll run with it. If you have a different idea, I'll do that too.
When's your announcement of the name, the celebration?
Well, I wanted to check with some other people for the sake of speeches and availability, but I'm looking at early June, late May. You know, the idea would be it's the end of school, the kids are all like getting squirrely, free pizza, you know, soda, sugar.
I'm getting a remembrance that I did see some names at some point in time. I don't remember how that happened.
Yep.
Yeah, it was, that was funny that, we were like, uh, they're needing to bus, I think, in the UK, similar to, yes.
That's right, yeah, yep.
All right, so, all right, we're good, so.
Well, Chris has got a question.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Chris Batz, so I'm, I'm just kind of curious because I've been to all these meetings and I'm, I'm kind of would love some clarity on the process for how names get approved. So this is a select board, Selectmen, Board of Selectmen Park, right? It belongs to you. Did you, was there a, a committee officially appointed by you to choose the, to choose the name?
Choose the name, to oversee the process. The, we bought into the idea that the students would, it was, they would elect, they would choose the name they wanted to keep the guardrails. We had a committee that was formed with, I think, appropriate people. So we didn't, we did not retain control of the process of getting to an answer. We retained control of defining that process and we effectively delegated the oversight of the process to the committee that we formed.
Okay, so there's not a process in which that recommendation then comes to you for a final sign-off?
Yes, yeah, I, there's two actually. Well, preliminarily, we showed them.
Wait, I'm, Rick, I'm asking, I'm asking them.
So, but the way I looked, I was talking, the way I looked at it. So we established a committee of reputable, experienced people here in town.
Sure.
They oversaw the process.
Sure.
The process itself was intended to teach students how, called contests, but how an election is run.
Yep.
And they came up with an answer. So the, as I saw, the discretion we exercised was when the four options were presented. We said, that's fine. If the committee is good with those, we're good with those. The process was the students would elect or, or vote for the one that they liked the best. They voted for the one they liked the best. It came back to the committee that was overseeing the process. They bought into it, as far as I'm concerned. We did not hang on to, intend to hang on to kind of a rubber stale or an approval step. They said, if we don't like the answer you come up with, then we're gonna override it. Because I think that would totally defeat the purpose of teaching, that would be the wrong kind of an election. That would be teaching students about a Russian election. So I don't want to do that. So that, so that's how we got where we got.
So I'm just, my question, my confusion is, is that when Rick says this has been approved, it wasn't, wasn't technically approved by the slum board.
The four names that were put forth, we said, we're okay with that.
When was, when was, when did that happen?
I'm trying to think what meeting you.
Or a year, at least a year, about a year ago.
Because one of them was a goofy name and we're like, all right, that's, um.
But it wasn't at a meeting?
Yeah, it was.
That goofy name came up in conversation and sort of, I think it was, I think, Pete, you were the one who mentioned that and wanted to make sure that there was some sort of vetting process so we didn't get a silly park name like Boaty McBoatface or whatever.
I love Boaty McBoatface. It's the name for a ship in the British Navy.
Well, we got, we got silly names, you know, of course, seventy-eight names. Some of the references, I don't, I'm told to understand what they mean, but, you know, was it gonna, we, we just passed on them, you know, and we found four really good ones that were already popular, so. So that's how we came up with it.
Was it like a year ago? When was that?
It was two, it was, this whole thing got kicked off two Thanksgivings ago because you, you had the event in the half-day on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. That's what kicked off this whole process.
Right, I remember that.
And that's, so that's how it got started and we had conversations before that, but we wouldn't have had nominations of names. I looked at it as kind of, this was a sort of, you know, harmless way to let the kids in town have some degree of influence over something in town that would mean something to them. So that's how we, that, yeah.
I'm only looking at from a, just a, over a larger, bigger picture policy question for in the future. So when these things happen, do we have something, sort of, do we have a policy in place for the steps that take place? Because it just seemed like, I, I, I just didn't remember any kind of sort of.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what.
There's no, there's no state statute, there's no local provision in the charter of the bylaws. Uh, there's kind of a informal sense in the absence of that, that whatever among my colleagues, because we've had discussions on, not Medfield situation, but the issue has arisen before with other communities, in the senses, whatever town Board of Commission has, care, custody, and control, naming is kind of incidental of that. That being said, it's not etched in stone, it could be changed.
What, for me, again, what happened with me is I didn't even realize that was a separate park. I always thought it was part of the library. And then Christine informed us that technically, I believe, it was called Board of Selectmen Park. We all seem to have gone.
It's like Board of Selectmen Peoples Park or something like that.
It was St. Edward's.
Footprint.
Well, it might have been, but the, the, what I, what I'm getting at is, at the time, I didn't think it was anything distinct from the library. And then all of a sudden, I find out we're the ones who had care, custody, and control. Not only that, but the park had our name on it, and so, it's like, you can change that if you want, so that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Are we good?
So, yeah, so we need to, we'll need to look at that. The one other thing that I'd like, when you're, if you have, I, I can't picture the sign itself, you don't have to send, I don't even picture the sign, but if the, if you have a design of the sign that you could send, so we know what it looks like.
Yeah, I'll have that.
That would be nice to have.
And if we looked at Bee Charm sign, that'll be the same as that, pretty much?
Uh, stylistically, the concept, two posts with, you know, some fasteners and a framing around the sign itself, just fixed to it.
That's if it's ground mounted and otherwise, picture, picture whatever the sign is.
The company was Signarama dot com, uh, they're in Walpole, if you go.
You know, with it, Rick, it could be Old English is the font he's using, so I kind of wanna see that.
Whatever you guys want, you know, I'm just, I'm just channeling this forward, that's all.
Well, you've channeled it forwards, that's good, we made some progress here.
No Comic Sans, that's.
Yeah, or Bees knees.
Do we wanna follow up with this, uh, next meeting?
You can put on that, on the April thirtieth meeting, okay.
So, how about April thirty, um, can I ask?
Jeff.
Unofficially, Jeff, from the sign committee, could we maybe get approval from you before that thirtieth meeting? Is this something that can be done via emails, or do they have to be monthly meetings?
No, you have to go to the meetings and you have to pull the building permit as well. You're too late for the agenda for Thursday.
Oh, 'cause it's the forty-eight hours.
The question was answered.
So, your next meeting would be in the end of May?
Yeah, I mean, it's flex, it's flexible, it's monthly, it's not a set, we, we set the date.
So, then the sign wouldn't just, it just wouldn't, we wouldn't have time to have it done this year, then?
That's not what you said. No. If you can't, I think what I heard Christine say is that you're too late for Thursday's meeting, 'cause I think it's a process and review and people need to know about it. So, we will meet, we meet monthly, so we'll be meeting in May in, in a reasonable, you know, three, four weeks from now. So, what I, what I'm saying is, if you, if you apply, if you decide what, between yourselves and the Selectmen, what you wanna do, you apply for the building permit at the, um, sorry, the, the sign, uh, at the building department. And I'm sure we'll, we'll certainly be able to review it, you know, in May, which could be three weeks from now.
Okay, so, if you meet with us on the thirtieth, and if you could send us just, you know, what the design of the.
Yeah, we'd have everything, the design.
Good, and then we can go here. The only other thing I would think we might wanna do is touch base with the library to see if they have any views at all on, I don't know whether they, I don't know if you, did you, you didn't by any chance talk to them about where they'd like the sign?
Yeah.
So, I'd be, I'd be happy to take their inputs on, you know, where they would or wouldn't like the sign.
Okay.
Yeah, it's unreasonable, so then that'd be the thirtieth, we probably can respond intelligently to location and sign.
Yep.
Then you'd be set to go to the, the sign committee. You have, I guess you could pull the, you could probably pull the permit anytime you want, it's not, this is a question of where it's going, not whether you could put one up.
Yeah, you guys approve aesthetics and style and design, right, and then they approve.
Yeah, compliant, yeah.
It's compliant and it can go there, right, so, yep.
Okay.
All right, well, I, I'm just worried about, maybe I'm up against it, because if it, the sign takes a couple of weeks to make, you know, so.
Okay.
And Rick, I think that we're gonna weigh back on the three locations where you have to.
Yeah, you just tell me where you want it, and I'll bring a shovel.
Thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, discussion items, action items. Uh, approve the one-day liquor license request for Rock the Woods concert at Rocky Woods on May nineteenth from twelve to five. And, can I keep going here, do you need?
It's not a consent agenda, it's just.
Keep, okay, then.
It's not consent agenda, it's just an action item, right?
So, yes.
Okay, you want a motion?
Yes, unless you have a, are you, are you good, okay?
No, we're fine, okay.
Okay, I move we approve the one-day liquor license request for Rock the Woods concert at Rocky Woods on May nineteenth from twelve to five P.M.
And I'll second the request for the Rock the Woods concert, just 'cause I like to say that.
At Rocky, you left the at Rocky Woods part out.
There you go, all right, all those in favor?
This is why I know we've gone too long?
Aye.
All right, again.
Maybe we just started too early.
That's also true.
All right, request to sign the partnership letter for Natick Regional MVP application on behalf of the Charles River Climate Compact.
Okay, I'm good with this, but I have a question.
Sure.
The first paragraph, my, my real question is, is this a form letter that we got, or is this a letter that we wrote?
No, this is a, this is a form letter from the Charles River Watershed Association.
So, the issues, this is an observation, I don't think it's an issue, but I'll, I'll throw it to Eileen and Pete. I assumed, the way I read it, I said, okay, this is a canned letter that somebody else wrote and gave to us. The things I reacted to is, the first paragraph, it says, Medfield has benefited immensely from the initiative, and my question was, how so? Uh, and the reason I'm asking is, this is a regional initiative that's going in a certain direction, I wouldn't, if the group wanted to go in a direction that we didn't wanna go in by effusively talking about how immense the benefit has been, we're gonna look like fools if we suddenly say, I don't know that we wanna do this thing you wanna do. I'm not falling on my sword over that, but it was an observation. And then it was the next, the last paragraph was where I said, are these our words, or were we given this? And you've answered my question, so.
Yeah, we were given it.
I will make the observation, it definitely sounds like a canned letter. I was, I reacted the one word immensely, only because I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly.
We can take, we, we benefit from it and we.
Yeah, just say benefit from it, then that's good.
We can take immensely of.
Okay, I would do that, uh, then if, if you're on the board, and then there's a typo.
There's a typo ion on the ground, yeah.
Ion on the ground, okay, so I, I'm good with it, uh, with that one minor edit.
All right.
So, I, I guess my question was, I didn't really understand what it was all about, I, and I'm, I'm, I'm impressed that we're giving them two hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, we're not giving them cash, it's two hundred and fifty dollars in-kind services. Um, so it counts the, the meetings that we attend with the Charles River Watershed now, as it is.
Okay, what is the initiative that we're supporting?
So, this is data gathering for the municipal vulnerability grant that Natick is leading, and it will do, um, strategies for landscape management, community engagement. They'll be looking at site designs in certain towns and doing, uh, further examination of culverts, uh, determine how we can lessen stormwater.
And you're in favor of us doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody came in and proposes for the Ponset Val, uh, the Ponset Watershed.
Yeah, we, we've been participating in the Ponset, so, uh, I didn't think any issue.
With rivers, you know, rivers go through towns and the idea that each town would make its own decisions in isolation doesn't make a lot of sense. It makes more sense for the towns to come together, there's no, there's no mandatory, you know, nobody controls us, we do what we want. But the idea that we come together and try to optimize the management of the river, both rivers, makes sense to me, so. I spoke against immense, but it's not like I spoke against the whole.
I also don't think it reads properly.
We're set, okay, I move that we sign the partnership letter for Natick's Regional MVP application on behalf of the Charles River Climate Compact.
Second.
As edited.
Second, as edited.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Citizens' comment, I don't have anyone registered for citizens' comment. All right, so consent agenda. Sign request by the MHS Theater Society to advertise Medfield After Dark performance from April twenty-sixth through May tenth at Main North Route twenty-seven South Street. Uh, sign request by the Medfield Food Cupboard to advertise the upcoming Stamp Out Hunger Postal Food Drive from May fifth through May twelfth at the four usual locations. Sign request by Bell Forge to advertise the Ferryhouse Walk from April seventeen through April twenty-seventh at Main and North and Route twenty-seven and South. And sign request from Boston Elite Basketball to promote their basketball camp at Blake Middle School from April twenty-second through May sixth at North and Main. And Lisa, are you here representing Postal? No, oh, okay, I didn't know if you were, and you're good with, um, anything for Bell Forge? Jean, you're good, okay, all right. Pete?
No questions.
Questions, I move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, meeting minutes, we didn't have any, yay. Christine, Town Administrator Updates.
Uh, super quick update, uh, the town meeting warrant went to print last week, and they'll be mailed, um, mid to the end of next week, so keep an eye out for your, in your mailbox for them.
Oh, good.
Um, you'll be just as surprised as us about the color, so stay tuned. And if anybody's looking to get a head start on doing research for town meeting, please head to our town meeting website, the posted warrant, uh, in addition to the warrant report are already posted there.
Good.
That's it.
All right, uh, next meeting dates, April thirtieth and May sixth being the annual town meeting. And then Select Board Member Reports.
I just happened upon a, a, a development in Sudbury for, uh, seniors that's a hundred percent affordable, and I've been communicating with Chris and Maria about that. I think it might be an opportunity for something that we could, uh, that we could do here, instead of usually they're twenty-five percent if they're forty B, but they've got a bylaw in Sudbury, apparently. Um, Medfield Foundation, uh, I'm, I'm on a governance committee now there, so we're trying to figure out governance. Uh, Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund, uh, is, uh, doing its pitch-it for the, the people are coming in to do the grants, uh, pitch-it next week, and that's the Peak House Heritage Center, Medfield TV, Bell Forge, the Friends of the Dwight Derby House, and the Medfield Historical Society. Impressive sets of, of proposals that, it'd be nice if there was more money to give out, because the proposals are so good. We've already had to cut out some of them. And then lastly, I've been recruited to judge a ferry walk, so I'm looking forward to that. If anybody needs to.
Bring your wings.
If anybody wants to, somebody to win, let me know what it's worth to you, I guess.
Say, what are you gonna be worth, Pete? It might be worth showing up to, the wings, that's a good, yeah, I think that.
I did see the ferry walk the first year, so I'm, I'm sort of familiar.
It was kinda cool.
All right, Gus?
Uh, I don't think I have any official reports, we've been meeting on these, I, I can't get into mischief with only a week to work with, but um, I will point, I will share a personal hike. I have a couple of high school classmates who normally we kayak, but they reached out to me, uh, a weekend, a week ago to see if I wanted to go on a hike in the Chase Woodlands, which is the trustees of reservations site that's a little just off a farm road, near a bridge. And I convinced them that rather than just doing that, they needed to see the rail trail. Uh, and then I was sure there would be, with all the horse trails there, I was sure that you could go beyond our rail trail, go well on beyond into Dover, to the Dover Town Forest. And on the map, it appeared that there just had to be a trail that went in the saddle between Grand Hill and, uh, what's the name of it? There's a, there's another road that I didn't even realize that dumped out onto Farm Street. Perhaps there is, which, so the request is, if anybody knows about a trail that connects Chase Woodlands to the rail trail, let me know. Uh, but if anybody's thinking about trying to find the trail to get from the rail trail to Chase Woodlands, I will advise you not to try to do that. We wound up ultimately having to bushwhack our way through, we wound up coming out near Springdale, and even then, we had to go down somebody's driveway who fortunately didn't have any dogs, uh, and had to climb over a fence to get to Farm Street, to walk back up to Chase Woodland, to then go back through. So, if anybody knows how to get from the rail trail to Chase Woodland, I would really be interested in hearing it. If anybody's thinking about trying to do it, don't. It was sort of fun, my, my land nav skills have not totally deteriorated, but it was interesting. That's it.
All right. Uh, I wasn't too busy, but I did have a, a nice, uh, Thursday of last week. I was invited by the two co-presidents at Medfield High School's chapter of Girls Who Start. So, I had, um, Evelyn Buckley and Hillary Day invite me to come meet with a group of, um, young women, and it was really fun. It was an absolute pleasure to come in, they originally asked me, do you like my notes?
Girls, no, Girls Who Start.
Girls Who Start, yeah, so it's, um.
I would think you'd wanna be dealing with the girls who finish.
No, but you know what, their mission, I actually took a screenshot of this, their mission is inspire by creating events that showcase female entrepreneurs, build by giving young women tools and opportunities to make their entrepreneurial ideas a reality, connect by creating an international community of young women who want to change the world. And it was a nice afternoon, I kinda gave my saga, it's kinda how I got in this seat. And then they asked me just some questions about, like, um, about life, and I explained some business trips that I've been on and some things I've experienced, and super fun afternoon, so I, I thanked them so much. Um, it was really a nice afternoon and a great opportunity to meet some freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. Uh, and then I did get an email from, um, Jill, who's the head of the school, excuse me, school, head of the control, dog control bylaw group. So, there certainly is a lot of banter going back and forth about, uh, people are aware that there's gonna be a warrant article addressing the, the leash law, uh, dog control bylaw technically. And, uh, there's a lot of discussion over whether some of the ideas could be edited, whether they like them or not. So, I was happy to see that people are giving it some thought, and, um, and then one of the things that came up was, you know, we've, we've said five is good, there was a lot of banter if three was a better number, so I think we're gonna hear, it would not surprise me on the, uh, town floor that people continue to debate that, which is fine. And then I'm just gonna give that shout-out again for anyone who wants to ask some questions about the upcoming town meeting. Uh, Mike Pastore, our new town moderator, is really, really trying to tap into residents, not only those that come all the time, but those that haven't been. And so, if you have questions about any of the warrant articles, uh, you don't wanna have to stand in front of the mic at the, at the gymnasium, at least go and ask him some questions. I know that some of the town leaders will be there to help with some of the questions um, that may come forward, so I just, I think it's a great idea, and I'm happy he's able to, um, set some time aside before the town meeting.
Do you have a date, location, and time?
Uh, I think it's actually this room.
This room.
At six o'clock on Monday, April twenty-ninth.
Correct.
Yep. So, um, that's something, Chris, if you can put that in the Medfield Insider, um, 'cause, you know, I applaud him, he really is trying to get, you accuse, I gave him, I'm like, hey, why don't you go to New In Town, you got a lot of new residents that don't understand this whole New England town meeting thing. So, um, the more we can get people to come and understand and, and look for the warrant, and I don't know what color it's gonna be, but.
Neither do I.
What's that?
Neither do I.
Uh, when it shows up in their mailbox, um, you know, give it a look over. So, on that note, motion to adjourn?
I move you adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks for coming.